...to ask questions about our FY 21 budget. But before we take any questions, Superintendent Collection has a presentation.
Great, thank you. So of course, we'll be talking about this in more detail when we actually get to this item tonight. So this is just really for that quick broad overview. So we'll go through it quickly and then if there are questions from any audience members, we'll take them and if not, we'll wait until our more in-depth conversation later this evening. So ultimately, here's where we've landed. As of today, we did send a memo around to, a notice around to each of the town administrators to let them know that these were the numbers that we've arrived at. So the proposed budget right now is the 58 million, 029848. The increase is 2.29 million. The increase for the school district budget then is 4.12%. How that breaks down for the differential for between last year and this year for the towns, Bolton, we hit the 3% that Bolton had requested. Lancaster is at 2.77% and Stowe is at 1.37%. The drivers, we've talked about some of our key drivers before. So you've seen this, but I just want to go back again. Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment came in to share it 10.21%. Out of district tuition, we saw a definite increase of 30% with that. We have a couple of staffing that are absolutely necessary for our programming that are in this budget as well as regular ed. And that regular ed position is actually a K position and that's just because of registration and numbers and move-ins to that particular community. The unit ANC contract matrix, the step and lane changes. We've got about half of our teachers in that matrix right now. So of course, when they move up either through a step or a lane, or a step and a lane, then of course, that's not the 2% because it's that plus the 2%. And so, you know, it's very difficult for us, for example, to come in with a 2% budget or 3% budget when we're dealing with this kind of thing. And this year as well, and again, this is old news to you, but you knew that this was coming. The former Minutemen positions are included in our budget for this year. So that's something to kind of keep in mind because there were the three positions, one in each community. And what went with that was the positions, with the positions were the salaries, the benefits, the supplies, classroom supplies, and any other technology or any other hardware, software. So that was previously in the Minutemen assessment that went directly to the towns. And so that right now this year is inside of our budget. What this has meant for us right now, and these are the key reductions. Nine staff reductions is what we're projecting. I'll talk about that in a minute. We have a couple of programs that we're going to streamline. For example, the mentorship program that we've got in place right now. We streamlined that a little bit. So those kinds of things, wherever we could find some streamlining, we did that. The OPEB funding, we had $100,000 in there when you saw this at the workshop in January. We've cut that back right now to 50,000 is how much is sitting on the line that you'll see tonight. We did the same thing with the turf and the truck field because, again, we've been saving for that because we know that that's coming rather than waiting till something happens and then having to go to the towns to borrow money and whatever. So that, again, we'd have 100,000, I believe, pad on that line. I think we've got 50 in that right now in the budget that you're going to see tonight. The school non-salary lines, what we did there was we went back to each of our schools and said, are there some other areas that you can cut? And each school submitted things that they felt that they could reduce in whatever form. We did that as well. I'm going to go back to nine staff positions in a minute. But Alita, can you go to the next slide, please? Facilities, you know, you'll recall, for example, that that was one ask that Rob had asked, had was for another member and we just, we just can't do it this year. And he, he came back with several reductions there. There were additional IT reductions and additional teaching and learning reductions as well. For example, teaching and learning came back with a $50,000 reduction in their line. So each unit really went out to wherever it was that they could to pull from and make the reductions. The nine staff that I had alluded to earlier, that's across the district. Nine staff across the district. It's not specifically in one building. Right now, five of those have been identified through natural attrition. And so, you know, that's kind of a natural way of reducing staff. It's still, it's not clean in terms of, it still is going to mean that there are other implications for other staff members. But right now, we have four left. And if you think about it, between now and, you know, another month or two, we may be able to reduce by one more staff member or two through natural attrition. It's hard to say as we sit here tonight. So when you, when you look at your executive summary tonight, you know, I think that there's a block there that you'll see that it says unidentified, but we, quite frankly, we know exactly what it's going to be. Again, at this point in time, we're not prepared to say names or positions or anything like that. It's just far too early. So that's why you've got the general none. So, so in a nutshell, those are the types of reductions. The only thing I would want to say too, and I know that other school committees have said, you know, we don't want you to say "tots," you can use the word reductions. And I understand that, but I've had to reduce every single year I've been here. And here I am again tonight. And my concern is that this is probably the last time I can do the reductions in this manner. We've had a number of principal meetings around this table. And next year, if I'm in the exact same, and this is not a threat. It's just what's going to happen, is it'll have to be programs. Like, there are no more individual pieces that I can pull from. Like, this is kind of it. This is my, basically, the fourth year of doing this kind of thing. So that's kind of where that's at in terms of reductions. I'm not sure, Alita, I don't know if there's another slide there.
There's not.
There's not, thank you.
Okay.
So in a nutshell, that's kind of where, where we're sitting at tonight. So in essence, we hit the 3% that Bolton was looking for. Lancaster and Stowe, I think, are, should both be happy with the numbers. But they're receiving the percentages, so I think that we've, I think that we've done a good job. I give all credit to Pat and her team, Michelle Cody, who's done yeoman's work, our principals for their creativity and innovation and consistently coming to the table. And, you know, they did say to me today, and I would want you to know what I expressed back. They said, "We feel really badly about coming on the Saturday workshop day and putting out there how badly we felt we needed the counselor positions." And then to come back and say, "Well, I guess we have to cut them." And I said, "No," I said, "that's not at all." I said, "Again, previous school committees," and I think for all the right reasons, "wanted to hear what you wanted and what you needed." And from my lens right now, if I was to put something back in there, one of the things I would want to put back in there would be at least one of those counselors, even if it's split between the two communities or whatever. So I said, "You can't feel badly about coming forward and saying, 'Look, we really need this,'" because the school committee needs to hear that.
That's right.
So they felt a little uncomfortable with that, but I still think it's a good process to go through. And I said that even to Rob Frieswick, "This is the second year you've asked for this. Maybe next year, we can get it for you," you know? So I don't think there's anything wrong with coming forward and saying, "This is what I think I need or the department needs." So that's kind of where we're at tonight. So, and again, I'll go into a little bit more depth when we, you know, we go into it tonight, a little bit later.
So does any member of the public have any questions about the budget? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the FY 21 budget hearing?
Come on.
Second.
Okay, and it is 6:08. Thank you. So now I will call to order the regular meeting of, I'm sorry.
Vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why we're here.
I thought I was going to get it right this time because I screwed up the school choice one. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. All right, note to self. All right, thank you. All right, so I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the NSHO Regional State Committee for February 26th and invite folks to stand for the pledge allegiance if they so choose.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Is anyone here for citizen comments? Okay.
The children.
Okay. So seeing none, we do have a presentation by the students of the Center School and I'll let you do the honors.
Sure, I think that I saw Assistant Principal Neal in here. Was she there? I think I, I think she's out there with the children. So we'll wait till they come in and I'm anxious to see what they have to say tonight about saving the earth. So we'll give them a minute to come in.
Somebody needs to do it. I'm glad.
Yeah, it sounds like it's in school.
Yeah.
Hello, welcome.
Come on in.
Come on up to the front here.
Come on down.
We're so glad to see you. Hello. Hi, you can come right around over here, okay? And we'll move out a little late. Welcome. And so I'll introduce you, if that's okay? So if you don't know one of our assistant principals, this is Kristi Neal and she is our assistant principal over at the Center School. And I'm going to turn it over to her to introduce. It's so nice to see you. Thank you so much. And to our parents, we thank you so much for bringing your children tonight. We're really looking forward to this. Thank you. Kristi?
So thank you all for having us. We're so excited to share this project. And Mrs. Marita's 4th grade class worked on, from the very beginning of the year, actually. Their, part of their persuasive writing unit was to think of problems and be able to communicate about some solutions that might happen. And they identified a problem that they saw right in our school and they're here to share what they came up with, with solutions and their great results.
Good evening. Welcome to Mrs. Marita's class. And we're each going to take a moment to introduce ourselves.
I'm Jackson Waltz.
I'm Nathan Blower.
I'm Scarlett Echol.
I'm Karen McCarthy.
I'm Lila Suzo. We're here tonight to tell you about the steps our class took to help Center School make choices that help the environment.
I'm Morgan Chandler Meyer and I will be helping my class make answer questions at the end of the presentation.
Our story starts in the school water pool. We'll place the water fountains. The water in the fountain has a wonderful atmosphere. Sounds like a good idea. With the cups at the water floor stationed in the 4th and 5th grade hallway, we're disrupting our learning. Listen to this video to find out the distraction the cups were causing.
You can fast forward this part till we get to the girls. Can you fast forward it?
It just doesn't show me, so I don't know where to start it.
Thanks.
Right there?
Great.
Is there, is there one?
There is mine. Yeah.
Selena, do you think that the disposable classes in our school are distracting learning?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes I definitely see these little, what do you call them? Cup towers where they're just stacked up. And some people would probably go over, they'd be like, "Oh, that's neat. I think I'll build one." And then some, and then they would go away. Then someone else would come and they'd be like, "Oh, yeah, I'll build one." And then another, and then another, and then another. And eventually, you just take something off, a lot of time. And you're also seeing your learning time. So there's no real reason to have them as a distraction. You should have them in a safe area where no one can get them. So while not, no one can get all of them. So like in a little chute or something where you take one out and you can't take another out until you're done with the first one. So that would be better because no one would be, take, 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 take over and build a huge tower because that would take a whole lot of money.
That's a good idea. I mean, there's probably, it probably weighs like five, 10, probably not 10, but at least five minutes a day of resetting up the cups. Like, you know, in October, by the fall, it just comes in, you know, re-stacks them up and then just goes over and the whole thing. It just, yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely distracting. And another way it could be distracting is if you take a cup and you secretly have it with you, maybe you have it in your pocket or something and it locks in your pocket. You're playing around with it, maybe you take it out a little bit and you're like fiddling, saying, making a little play out of it. And you're absolutely having no attention to whatever the teacher's talking about. So bottom line, it distracts from learning.
But the cups were just distracting the kids at the water floor. They were distracting our class. Each time they crashed onto the floor, the noise interrupted our learning. So we talked to the fabulous Mrs. O'Brien and found out some information. In the first 24 days of school, we had used 24,400 cups and had spent $940. That's over 1,000 cups a day.
This is a problem because according to the World Wildlife Federation, on average, it takes a plastic cup 450 years to biodegrade. That's so long. And most of the plastic we get rid of ends up in the ocean. There are five areas of trash in our oceans. One area, the Pacific Garbage Patch, is larger than Texas.
That's not good news. So we decided to do something about it. We presented the facts at our all-school meeting and took away the plastic cups outside of our classroom.
Now 4th and 5th grade students have to ask the teachers if they want a cup.
We also have had a school-wide challenge to encourage students to bring their own water bottles each day, three-fourths of a class. Brought in water bottles. They colored in one ladder on their "Save the Earth" sign. When each class's sign was colored in, they had an all-school pajama day. Talk about fun.
But it wasn't just fun. Here's what happened when we took away the plastic cup station upstairs. Now each month, we only use 4,333 cups and spend $262. That's about 20,000 fewer cups a month and almost $700 less a month.
That's right. If we multiply those numbers times three, because it has been three months since we made the change, we have saved 60,000 cups from entering the landfill and saved the school $2,034.
That makes me think about sperm whales. Why does talking about cups make you think about sperm whales?
Well, sperm whales are the whales most affected by plastics in the ocean. In November of 2018, a sperm whale was found on the coast of Indian Asia. It had 115 plastic cups in its stomach.
That's so sad.
It is, but think about the difference we made. We've helped keep 60,000 cups from entering the ocean.
That's incredible. Plus, we saved all that money.
We could take other actions that make a difference.
That's true. We could replace the cafeteria's plastic utensils with reusable cutlery.
That's a great idea. We could replace the foam plastic trays with reusable trays.
Or we could start composting our food waste.
We'd like to apply for a Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Reduce-reuse-Repair Micro Grant so that we can replace the disposable cupry or disposable trays or start, or start composting our waste.
The DEP awards grants to schools and communities to reduce waste. We think our success in reducing the amount of plastic cups consumed at Center School will increase our likelihood of winning a grant.
We'd also like to know if you know of other waste prevention rates we could apply for?
Thank you for your consideration. Thanks for letting us present tonight. We look forward to hearing from you.
Any questions?
To the school committee, any questions? Mr. Horace?
Guys, this was awesome. This was really, really nice. And the change that you made was outstanding. A few slides back, you had a list of other initiatives that you could take. Right, right here, the plastic utensils and replacing the foam trays with reusable trays. Would you need to wait for the grant to start that? Or have you already started conversations about how you could potentially make that change?
Well, we're going to wait for the grant first and then we'll sort of try to figure it out.
Those are some great ideas, though.
Anything else?
Selena? So this is great, you guys. It's just like really fantastic. And I think it really speaks to how important it is that when you see something that you think you can improve, like speak up and say something. Because look at the difference that you guys made just by noticing that the cups were a distraction we were using today. Did you face any challenges or obstacles when you were trying to reduce the usage of cups? And how did you overcome that?
Were there, were there people who didn't want to use cups over again? Or just, you know, or just wanted to just keep pulling the cups off, out of the racks so that they can play with them?
Yeah.
Yeah? What did you tell them?
We told...
You didn't bait them up?
There wasn't people that didn't want to.
I think the problems were before this whole project started. People playing with the cups and, and being silly with the cups and distracting people. But once this project started and other kids were made aware of this big size of this big problem, then we had less problems with the cups in the hallway. Kids, would you agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Leah?
Hi, guys. Great job. This is really interesting. Thank you so much for this. I wonder, how did Mrs. Marita kind of get you guys to brainstorm ideas? Was this just the idea that was like the very most important to you all? Or were there other problems in your school that you were considering addressing?
This was basically the only idea that we had.
Yeah, because Center School's pretty awesome. You make us all proud. Thanks, guys.
So I really like the idea that you guys are interested in a, in a grant. And $5,000 is a lot of money. So what do you, if you get the grant, what are your plans for using that money? Have you talked about that yet?
Well, if we get the grant, we want to replace everything with reusable items.
Sounds good. Very good. I'm so impressed. I can't thank you enough for coming out tonight. And I think to your teacher, thank you so much. They were fabulous.
Thank you. They're so fantastic. And I believe you have to say, this whole thing was student-led. It was actually Scarlett one day. She's like, "I'm so sick and tired of those cups." I mean, we just, literally, they were falling down. And so I, I wouldn't have done anything by myself. But when you realize it's bothering the kids as much as it's bothering yourself, then it's time to take action. So they really started off the whole thing.
And you know, of course, I look at through a very different lens because, you know, I never once thought about the plastic cups until tonight. And of course, my focus was always the water. And so it's interesting to, to see this and to see the problem that you addressed and how you addressed it. And that you were so successful. Oh, my goodness. So hats off to all of you. And you were so professional tonight, so poised. And we're just so, so proud of you. So thank you. And Principal Monk, Karen here is here.
They started early. This is great.
They did. They did, they were fabulous. So thank you very much. Thank you, our parents, for bringing them. We're so proud of them. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you.
All right, come on over.
Come over, everybody. I got 20. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming.
The old age, it was just hanging on a string.
I think we might be past the table.
Thanks for sharing.
Wasn't very sanitary, but it was good for the earth.
Did you guys announce yet? The assessments?
No. Oh, yeah. Did you get my schedule?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
So my schedule that I have is for all...
We financed that.
Okay. Yep. The assessment?
Oh, no, the new release assessment is not yet.
Oh, when does that come out?
Probably the day that we're...
Oh, okay.
Which is next, two weeks from now.
Two weeks, okay.
Yeah, I think she needs to log in on this.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So I'm going to refocus us and go to the school committee chair updates. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Ready?
Thank you.
Yeah. So I am going to do my very best to make sure that this meeting does not last four hours like last week's meeting. And so, yeah, yeah. And so I'll, I'll do my best, but if I need to rein anybody in, you know, I have to. I never get any feedback about meetings ever from outside. And just in the past week, people that watch it have said, "Four hours? You kidding me? I'll fall asleep." Well, I'm not making you watch it. Imagine being here for four hours. But we'll do our best. So just a few updates regarding investigation. We expect to meet with Attorney Norris in executive session at our next meeting on March 11. On March 2nd, Brooke, Pat Maroney, Joseph and I are going to meet with the Lancaster FinCom to present our budget. And I just, I might not be up on the other, what's going on in the other towns in terms of folks meeting with FinCom. And does that, yes, here?
It already happened.
Okay.
It was the 13th.
Okay.
And so I was able to present to the select board.
Thanks. What about in Stowe?
Stowe's coming up, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Pat? The Stowe, Stowe meeting, I think is...
It's the 20-something. I haven't received final order back on that yet.
Okay. I think, yeah, I actually think that they had to do a reschedule if memory serves me right.
Okay. Just a reminder that Trittown meeting is March 4th. It's in Lancaster at the Prescott Building in the National Room at 7 o'clock. And then another reminder that on March 25th, Dorothy Presser from MASC will be joining us to do a workshop on conducting the superintendent's evaluation and will begin at 5 o'clock. And we will have stuff for us to eat. Any questions? Okay. Ivy is not here. I don't, no, no.
Yeah, she's not.
She, did she send anything?
No, she didn't send a report. Actually, I guess her car, she was in an accident. And so her car is down, I believe in Pennsylvania, I think, is where she, her car is at right now. So, yes, so she won't be here tonight. And I said, "Just take care of you."
Yes, all right. Is she okay?
Yeah, she's fine. Yes.
Okay, so now we'll have the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, Leah. Go ahead.
I have two clarifying questions.
Yes.
Number one, I think I missed the memo that I need to meet with the Stowe FinCom.
No.
You don't need to. No, you don't need to.
It's just something that we've always done. And it's different in every town how it works.
Okay.
So, but if you wanted to go check with Pat, Pat and someone from administration usually goes. And in the last maybe four or five years, I know in Lancaster that the Lancaster reps have gone as well.
And this is to clarify budgetary.
Just let them, and this to be there to represent the school committee. But it's not mandatory. It's, and again, every town does it a little bit differently.
And then the Dorothy Presser meeting, you said, is before the next school committee meeting, right?
Oh, the 25th. That's the second meeting in March, not the next one.
And that is not just for personnel subcommittee, that's for all of us?
Everybody. And you're going to, you're going to be away, I think.
I think we might be back.
All right.
I may be away too. Not, we won't be back. It's going to depend.
All right, so if... Then that means everybody else has to be here. So please, if there are any problems on the 25th, let me know ahead of time because if we don't have a quorum, we can't meet. We don't need a quorum for Dorothy's workshop, I don't think. You don't need a quorum for the workshop.
For the workshop.
No. And then Leah, you and I can get together and I can go over, go what you need to do for the superintendents.
Okay, thank you.
And Steve's a veteran of...
Done it before.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay. I beg your pardon?
I said, "I hate it," but I've done it before.
I gave you an opportunity to say. I was just carrying my pen. Okay. So the superintendent's report.
So what we decided to do is because really, we've had the week off. And so I thought, you know what? Tonight, what I'd do is I would just focus on the high school. And then I know that Dr. McGuire's going to just say a couple of words about March 6. And he, he's going to chime in a couple of points here as we kind of just go through and talk a little bit. It bits and pieces kind of random. Some things have been going on there. So if you've got the report there, I'll just go through quickly with you. The NRHS campus continues to bustle with activity. Our students continue to do well with their academics and the extracurricular activities. Our staff and administration continues to work hard to support the work and their students. In terms of visibility, and this has been true since, of course, you know, September, October type thing, both Dr. McGuire and I are over... Both Dr. McGuire and I are over there in and out of mostly offices. But sometimes he gets the opportunity to go into classrooms. I don't have quite that same timeframe to be going in and out of classrooms. My work generally is more in the offices. Or as I walk through the building and I get a chance to drop in at the department chairs' offices, for example, and meet with them and such. So it's been very, very good and very, very positive. And we'll continue, of course, to do that. We do receive invitations to take in presentations or different class happenings or events. And we continue to do that as well. On January 2, we had a panel presentation set up for our staff there. And we held it in the auditorium. And our HR director was there as well as legal counsel. And we had somebody from the crisis team as well, a crisis center. And so it was really a nice opportunity for staff to just engage, enrich discussion, ask good questions, whether it was of our lawyer, whether it was anything to do with HR and contract things. So that was a very successful, I think, a very successful time period during that particular meeting time. The planned administrative professional development that we had planned, you'll recall that we had engaged John Doria to come in and work with our principal and the department chairs and such. And when Mr. De Nomenical left, we stopped that because we weren't sure whether we wanted to continue to move forward with it or not. Because the intent really was to work with the principal and the department chairs with that vacant leadership role. It didn't make any sense for us to continue. We had some discussion with John Doria about maybe continuing it in January, February. In January, we connected with him again and he said, "Why don't we just hang tight here and see what happens once everything finishes off?" So I think that that's kind of worth just a whole bettering with that. But he certainly knows that we want him to work with whoever is in that building in that principal's role. So he's kind of just sitting out on hold. The Sunshine Fund has taken itself up again, which is fabulous to see. It was at one of the staff meetings that we attended where they were giving out all kinds of onesies. We'd like to point that out. He got an orange one, I guess, for his little baby there. And of course, you know, I think Tonya Rich was acknowledged because she's pregnant now, expecting. And so that was exciting. So they do all kinds of really neat little things. And they do, they provide different snacks, you know, for different activities. And including for students as well. So that's ongoing. So we're really glad, we really thank them for their efforts. Thank you. The substance abuse task force committee apparently had been active for a number of years, but then kind of went into a bit of a hiatus. That has started back up again. And so that group has continued to do some work. It's mostly leadership that's on that and a couple of teachers. So we thank them for their, for bringing the group back and doing some good work with that. Communication, basically, the staff is reporting to me that internal communication throughout the building has definitely improved. And so we're very pleased with that. Challenge Day has been around this table before. It was postponed as a result of a snow day, but it has been rescheduled for April. So that's going to continue on. The dean of students is a position that we put in place this year. And our interim principal has requested that we please keep it in place into the new school year. He just feels that it's really an important role right now. We think it's an important role. The emphasis really for that position is really to work with discipline on one level, but really more of a building vision of students and such. And I think that Jamie Tucker's in there right now and is doing a great job with it. So we're really pleased with the efforts that we're seeing there. Student voice, I know that we've all talked around the table about that as well. We did put out on Twitter today, and I'll talk about that later on in our meeting tonight. I did meet today with a group of students who are working after our meeting yesterday, Leah and Delaine. I met with them this morning and it was just, it was great. And they actually had come up with even, I thought, even better ideas in terms of a couple of areas than we had thought on yesterday. So I'm really excited to see what they come up with. So we want to thank all the kids who have come forward and met with us as groups or met with us individually. And so we want to thank them. In terms of the NRHS, I've called it the project pre-planning team. And I'm going to let Dr. McGuire speak to that. But that really is the nucleus that we're working with right now for the MSBA in terms of pre-planning of whatever a project could look like. And so I'm going to let him speak to this component here.
Sure. You met Dr. Jake Foster, who's spearheading this work with us over at the high school as we continue the work around visioning for the high school as it is now and the prospects of a new high school. This visioning group, which is consisting of a few high school teachers, some administrators, our teaching and learning team, myself, we've been really busy visiting classes, soliciting feedback from teachers and students and implementing meetings that are focused on thinking about innovative educational programming. Dr. Foster has been on site for much of this work. He is on site at least once, if not more during the week, each week.
In and out of classrooms.
In and out of classrooms and working extensively with department heads as well as our team. I think I mentioned a department meeting that we held at the high school last month where the teachers really were able to take the meeting and run with it with the work that he's been doing with us. The team also...
The department chairs really led part of that, too.
In the department chairs, yeah. The team also recently learned that we are recipients of a school excursion grant through Next Generation Learning and the Barr Foundation, which will work with, which is going to work with the team in developing a visioning plan for our high school while working in concert with a model district in San Diego, California. This group is going to travel for this work in late March. And I'm going to speak to this grant and its implications for our work moving forward later this evening. But that is the article that I handed out to the school committee earlier. So I'm going to speak to that grant extensively a little bit later on this evening. But as a result of the work we're doing with Dr. Foster and this pre-planning, visioning team, we were one of six schools to receive this grant in Massachusetts. So we're going to have the opportunity to work with a model district out in Carlsbad, California at the end of the month. And they're really going to help us set a vision for our school with some of the pre-work that we're doing right now when we get out there. So we're really excited about that.
So it's very exciting work. The leadership team, then, the department chairs have begun to do some very extensive work. And they're digging deeply into this area and as we look forward. So we're very appreciative of their efforts. We've also had a couple of staff breakfasts. I know the sped team, our district sped team, under the guidance of Mrs. De Angelis, helped to organize a breakfast for them one morning. And we did one for them as a district central office team. We did one for them on February 14, which seemed appropriate. So that's kind of where we were at with that. The other thing that I would mention too, even when we were talking, this is not listed on this, but I just want to bring these two things up. In talking to those students this morning, and this kind of goes back to our meeting yesterday with Elaine and Leah as we were talking about communication, about the feasibility study and the project in general. And, you know, your first reaction was, well, you'd really like people to see like the broken parts of this building and that, you know, the seams or where the floors are separated completely or where there's cracks in the walls or the roofs that are leaking or whatever. And then we said, and I think it was Elaine, you said, you know, "Do we turn this rate around?" And so as I slept on it last night, I was thinking, "I wonder if there's a balance in here that we can do." Because you know that you need to show how badly you need something, but you really don't want it to be like that ugly piece. And so how do you bring that positivity around? When I went to speak with the students this morning, they had it all worked out. I said, "Well, I've got a couple of ideas, but I'd like to hear yours first." And they said, "Well, we think," and it was exactly what we had said, "We can show them this, but we can show it in a positive way." And so they had a whole plan laid out for the storyboard, for the videos. And they said, you know, "We want to show that we're the flagship school and we've, you know, we're a great school. We do great things in here." And they just had such a beautiful vision when I went there this morning. It was so empowering to me. So hats off to Michael and Katie. And Grace Fiore was there as well. And she just does a great job. I had also asked her about the digital magazine. And they're definitely going to put links on it for us as well. So it was a fabulous meeting this morning with them. And the school council, I also want to thank our school council. I've mentioned that before too. But I was saying to Kathy tonight, when I wrapped up the meeting with our school council, my component of it, and I turned to one of the student members, I said, "Any takeaways from you on this year?" And he said, "We have had a great year." He said, "It has just been a really great year." And that's one of our Bolton students. So it was really nice to hear. So that's kind of a broad overview, kind of connecting the dots for a different type of superintendent's report tonight. Because there isn't a lot other than budget. I mean, Todd said to me the other day, "Will we ever stop the three-hour meeting for budget, a day?" "No, not until," and said, "Not until it's wrapped up." So we thought tonight would be appropriate. We kind of just highlight some of those, so.
Of course. Thank you. And I know that I have said to you that, you know, since we've been meeting all year, there are little things that happen here and there. And so, but putting them all together really makes a difference. And so thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
Actually, I have just a request and a comment regarding the superintendent's report. The request you brought, I wasn't going to bring this up at this point, but since you did bring it up, you're talking about some of the conditions at the high school.
Right.
And I was wondering, and I'm just throwing that out of consideration. And I hate to do this to Mr. Frieda because he's such a good guy. But is there any possibility that perhaps on some Saturday morning, the committee or anybody who's interested could get a tour of the high school so that he could highlight some of the issues?
Absolutely. It would be our pleasure. We would love to take you through that.
I would love to go and see the school on a Saturday. No kids around, just somebody from plant maintenance and to show us where the warts are and what it was, who we're dealing with.
Will definitely, yeah.
No, Rob, I mean, I'm just thinking, it's going to be now in May.
Yeah, absolutely. I want to piggyback on what Joe's saying. And I agree, it's good just so for maneuverability.
Yeah.
But I also think there's value in being there during the school day. So, and maybe we go see the building, warts and all. But to be there when the kids are there, to see that despite some of the shortcomings in the building, just the vibe of the school and the kids, the interactions, what's going on in the classrooms, in the media center, in the cafeteria. So I would encourage folks, if at all possible, to, you know, if you have an opportunity to do that, to do it at the high school. But also at the other schools, Joseph, I know that you've taken advantage of that opportunity in Lancaster.
Yep.
And it's, it can be a juggle with folks' schedules. But it's so, these are exceptional places for students to learn. And there are exceptional people working with them. And to get that vibe and to see the life of the school is just amazing.
And that's really what the students were saying today, you know, that in spite of this, like, you know, our indoor track team, you know, where do they train? Well, they train in our halls, right? Like you never, we've said, how many times have we got just about knocked over in the hallways? Because if you get there at the right time and they're doing their training, you're, really, it's a dangerous thing for you. Those, all those kinds of little things. But, you know, the students said, "In spite of all this, like, we've got a great attitude. We have a great school, and here we are." And that's the approach that they're going to take with the videos that they're creating for us.
Great.
So, yeah, very, very good.
There was one problem this night.
Sure, sure.
By the way, it's funny, you brought up the training in the halls. We're not the only, we shouldn't be, but we're not the only school.
No, no, we know that. We know that.
If you ever want to get a workout in, you can do that.
The other thing is, and again, it's one, you mentioned on student voice. And this is just more of a follow-up. And it's nothing to do with actually the superintendent's report, but since you brought it up under report, I'll just throw this out very quickly. Couple of months ago, Dr. McCarthy brought up this issue regarding the statute that, regarding, forgive me for paraphrasing, but members of the student council, whatever, are required to be before the school committee on a semi-regular basis and whatever. And I cavalierly threw out the concept that perhaps it would be a good idea for the Commonwealth, for the legislators, to consider rescinding that because MASC is reporting that most school districts don't follow it. And the few that are doing something, it's more in the spirit of the statute than it is actual strict adherence. So in that regard, the chair tasked me with contacting one of our legislators, which I did. And I spoke to Dean Transov, Senator Dean Trans. So Dean Trans represents Bolton and Lancaster, not Stowe. But I figured I'd start with him. He's my legislator, so I figured I'd do. And I threw out the possibility that perhaps, because, you know, if you go on his website, you see all the bills that he's introduced and what have you. I'm thinking, how about one through a cent? You know, how about a little less? Less is more sometimes. So I threw it out to one of his staff members. And I framed it in this manner, and I don't know if this is acceptable, but I did. I said, "Look, there's a lot of interest in our district from certain members of the committee and the administration to give more voice to our students." And I would say, I suggested that perhaps it might be more prudent to allow school districts at a local level to formulate their own policies on how they want to do this as opposed to having something coming from Boston. And they said they'd look into it. So that's the way I framed it. It's more like, just please just rescind the statute that is actually not being enforced or being followed by the Commonwealth and let each district formulate their own policy.
Thank you. And thanks for following up.
All right, no, thank you for the compliment.
But, yeah, and it would seem, I mean, if they checked to see who was doing it to the letter, like MASC said, you know, that people are doing a variety of different things. They are sort of adapting it. And Leah will have something to speak about that shortly. Something. Thank you, Joseph. Yes, Leah?
I just have a quick question. And we've talked about this offline. But if you could maybe just elaborate on camera here. As we embark on this project to kind of illuminate all of the warts in this high school building, some parents are concerned that they have children who are going to school in a sick building, and my son included. So can you just help us understand how we're going to be managing this building in between here and there?
Well, I think, first of all, I think Dr. McGuire had a great answer for you the other day. And I'd ask him to repeat, re-articulate that, and then I'm going to go back after it.
Sure. So I think I mentioned that if you take a look at our 2015 NEASK accreditation report, you know, we are, it is an accredited high school. And a big part of that report has to do with physical facilities. And part of the standards associated with that are that the facility is, you know, we were accredited. So if there were major warning signs in 2015 or issues, we would have been put on warning or not received accreditation, so if we were in an unsafe building. So, and with that 2015 report comes recommendations. And every two and then every five years, we have to come up with progress reports and report out on those things. And it being 2020, we are at that five-year check-in point with them. So we would not have, we wouldn't be an accredited institution if we were in an unsafe building, number one. So that is the case in terms, and the accreditation report is on the website. And it was written in 2015. So we will have an update and then a review with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges again this year with the five-year. And then we'll be gearing up again for another accreditation visit as it's a decennial piece every 10 years. So that's, you know, we, people can rest assured that children are not going to school every day in an unsafe building because that's why we have, you know, accreditation processes and why we participate in that process with NEASK.
And I think just as a follow-up, I mean, part of the issue, and this came up when the folks from MSBA came through the tour in December of last year. The building looks good because it's so well-kept and it's clean. And I think that Rob Frieswick, again, has just done yeoman's work in terms of putting all the preventative action plans in place and whatnot. And so I think we feel very comfortable with that building right now. But the bottom line is every time that something, you know, goes wrong, it's not a $5,000 or $10,000 ticket, you know? And that's what I was saying with the students this year. I said, you know, if you think about it, we put $300,000 into a leach field, basically, so we could flush toilets. I mean, it's like simple stuff, you know? And our alarm system, I've said this before, for our heating system, we can't get parts for it anymore. It's antiquated. So when the, when the heating system is down, the alarm doesn't go off anymore. And so we might not, so then you're looking at even possibly greater damage under the building with frozen pipes or whatever. So, you know, I think that we feel very comfortable. And we would be first to say that, you know, we didn't and we're not there right now.
Mike?
I just want to thank you for providing this kind of update, as it were. I'm sure that rest of the committee appreciates it. I'm sure the community really appreciates it. So thank you. I wonder if you can provide a little bit more detail about the communication piece? It says staff have reported that internal communication has improved. Can you maybe elaborate what kind of internal communication, maybe how we know that it...
And that's really much, much more narrative from teachers as I'm walking through the hallways and they stop and talk to me and that kind of thing. We haven't done any deep dive on this or anything like that. It's what teachers are telling me as I'm walking through the hallway. You just want you to know. And they're saying things like, you know, "I just want you to know, like, we feel really happy" or "We're feeling really good about things. We feel that our communication is much better right now with our main office or what have you." So it's more that type of a narrative than any deep dive that we took.
Can I?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll just point out too, I think that the work that Dr. Foster is doing with the high school and bringing him to department meetings and faculty meetings, he's done a lot of the communication about this MSBA process, what it means, walking the entire staff through the modules, kind of like he did with this committee a couple of weeks ago. So I know the feedback from the staff during those meetings, they were very appreciative to know what the process is, to be a part of the process. So I think that's been a big communication piece around the process moving forward with this visioning and the way in which he's working with department heads first. And then those department heads are then sending that same consistent message into their department so that when they... so that when they come into meetings, whole, whole school, everyone's in the feel, feeling as though they're in the know. And I've, I've been at those meetings with him. So, you know, I've certainly gotten that feedback from, from staff.
And I think the other thing, too, is, I mean, when we, we think about the health and the climate, by the way, too, you know, the climate committee is still in action over there. And it has been for years and it still is in action as we talk tonight. You know, I still get emails, too, from folks or, you know, for example, even after like the breakfast, "We want you to know how much we appreciated this," you know? They're, they're, they're just such a good stuff. They just really are a great stuff. And I think they've been incredibly resilient. And I think that they've risen to where they needed to go and what they needed to do. And I think that they deserve all the credit in the world. Of course, I say this, and we've got a staff member here, it just dawned on me. So, it's like, I'm talking about you and your city right here. But it is, it's, it's a, it's a great building.
He's blushing, he's, you know.
It's a great, it's a great building and we can't lose sight of that.
Yep.
Can I just ask one follow-up question? I know you're very sensitive on time.
No, no, we're doing good, we're doing good, just keep going.
Just, it occurred to me, Dr. McGuire, when you, when you mentioned Dr. Foster's work, is there going to be an opportunity where that data will be compiled and then shared out to the school?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, this is very, this is very, very kind of that pre-planning. And as, as you heard him mention a couple of weeks ago, I think we're ahead of the game in terms of this process. And because he's so informed and I think he's so seasoned with the process, he knows with all of this pre-planning, we'll have so much information to then share out. And I think even when I talk about this work that we're going to do in San Diego, that's all of the pre-planning that we're then going to come back with so much, hopefully, to share and then move forward.
And I think, too, you know, that there's a certain level of excitement. For example, we had a staff, another staff member in California, you probably know exactly who I'm talking about, you know, last week. And she toured the Vista High School.
The High Tech, High Tech.
Rather, High Tech, right, you, you're going to Vista, the High Tech. And she was so excited and so she sent me all kinds of stuff, an email and tons of pictures. And you won't believe what I saw and blah, blah, blah. And I saw her today and that's excitement. She said, you know, "This is just such a good thing for us. We're in such a good place." So, you know, and I remember, Leah, you said, mentioned one, at one point in time, "It would be interesting to see, you know, the effects of the, the building, if that comes to pass on the staff." And it couldn't have come at a better time, quite frankly, because all of this stuff, it has to be done, the work has to be done. They're pulling together and doing exactly what they need to do. I mean, and when you ask the question about what we see, part of it is, part of the, the work here is creating the educational profile and the educational plan, which is mandated for us through the MSBA. So, when that's compiled, we'll be bringing that forward because that will be submitted to MSBA. So.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, now we will move on to the Hale PTO donation and.
Here comes Pat.
Okay.
Right on cue.
I have a letter from Cal Grady, the principal at Hale Middle School. Says, "Dear school committee members, thank you for your service to our communities. Please consider accepting a donation from the Stowe Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of $3,800. This will cover the cost of 10 Galaxy tablets. These tablets will be used within our computer science digital literacy classroom, the after-school coding club, the robotics club, and our video production club. We are incredibly grateful to have an amazing cooperative relationship with our PTO. And this is just one example, example of the many ways to support our schools. Again, thank you for your service to our communities."
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
Sure. I move to accept the donation to the Hale Middle School from the Stowe Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of $3,800 to be used to purchase 10 Galaxy tablets.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Moving right along.
And I have a letter from the principal, Sean O'Shea, from the Mary Rollinson Elementary School. And he says, "Dear members of the school board, please accept this letter and request to receive a gift donation made to the Mary Rollinson Elementary School. A gift donation in the amount of $500 has been offered to the Mary Rollinson School by ExxonMobil Lancaster Racing Mark. The gift has been offered to support the areas of math and science. This gift is generous and appreciated by the school. Thank you for your consideration."
Can I have a motion?
I move to accept the donation to the Mary Rollinson Elementary School from the ExxonMobil Lancaster Racing Mark in the amount of $500 to support the areas of math and science.
Second.
All in favor?
Was that, was that Joe or Mike?
Joe, Joseph. In favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay. So, the next item is the school committee goals update. And I passed out a copy of our goals. And I think this item will replace the, the report out. So, if you want to speak to anything we've done with the goals. So, we set these at the beginning of the year. We did a survey during our summer retreat. And so, these are the, the, the goals that we had established. The policy subcommittee will complete policy review and bring the policies to the school committee for their review and approval. And that has been completed. The new member orientation and the orientation to the school committee manual, that was part of the orientation this year. School committee will review the district improvement plan annually for alignment with the district mission, vision and core values. And we did that and that will be continued of our practice as we do our workshop every year. The, we have not done this yet, the, to evaluate the new member orientation, I think, as, as we get past the budget.
Budget season.
Yes. We're going to have a deluge of things. And I know that the personnel subcommittee, a part of their charge is to conduct an annual evaluation of the school committee manual. I know that that has been superseded by goals around communication. But any, have, have you guys talked about the plan for doing that? Again, recognizing the work you're doing with communication?
Okay, I'll speak to that. I, I think one of the things we talked about around last meeting was considering future revisions to the manual with regards to the calendar and town representation.
Okay.
So, as we kind of move away from visiting the communication plan, I think we'll be moving towards that for our next few meetings.
Great. Could you speak to the communication plan now? Because even though we didn't articulate it at the time, it has emerged as a major part of the work that you guys are doing.
I can do it as part of the report or I can do it now?
No, I want to sort of put everything together so we can not do the reports.
Oh, okay, sure.
But it's like, I mean, you guys have been working on it and so it is like a goal.
Yeah, so, the committee met a couple of times independently to kind of review the, and chime in whenever you like, the, the communication plan for the district. And we sort of evaluated what we felt was there, what we felt was needed, and then we kind of brought those two together. We basically identified the difference between a managerial communication plan and a strategic communication plan. And we then brought the superintendent in. We had some really rich conversations about strategic communication and how, what that looks like, the attributes of strong communication, and what that looks like to faculty, to families, to community. So, I, I mean, I think we had some really nice conversations. And I think the plan moving forward, and you can certainly speak to this, is to, and I think that you've shared this out with Dr. McGuire as well, the results of these conversations.
Absolutely.
Is to sort of adopt some of those new findings for the communication plan moving forward.
Sounds great. And if I can just speak to, I think it was really, I, I think, Elaine, you did a nice job of saying, you know, when you take a look at the plan, you can go check, check, check. I think we are at the level where we're wanting to go a little deeper. Would that be fair to say?
Absolutely.
And I would agree with his, his articulation of rich conversation. I felt it was very rich. I thought it was an awesome meeting.
Yeah, me, too.
Okay. Thank you. In the area of, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want, I just wanted to add that one of the things that came out of that meeting was part of strategic communication is actually grouped around a content area, not necessarily like regular updates in communication. And so, we talked about what some of those big themes might be. And the MSBA actually emerged as one. So, I think you're going to see a communication plan for the MSBA through funding the feasibility study at town meeting. And that will be a sort of an outcome of the work that we've been doing.
Super.
And I think to add, I think we've already started to see the early stages of that.
Exactly.
The continuings.
Good, thank you. And I think that when we started out and set that as a goal, we were looking at what was established as the communication plan. But I want to acknowledge the work that you guys have done, really having, you know, really analyzing it and, and making it better. So, it's not just something that exists on paper, but that has some practical application and value for the district. So, thank you for your work on that. With regard to member relations, one of our goals was to conduct a self-evaluation, which we did last June. And we, I don't think we had done it before in accordance with policy BAA. But that can become a part of the June workshop and looking at, to take the, the, a survey of source before the workshop and then look at the results at the workshop. With regard to financial strategic planning and fiscal management, we talked about inservicing regarding the district's long-term financial strategic plan, constituencies involved in budget development, and how the school committee presents and advocates for the budget. So, that's under superintendent. And I know Pat and I know Steve has been involved in, just in terms of the orientation. One of the orientations to the budget was through budget and warrant. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't know if you, Pat.
Well, you speak.
What she said. I think, too, I don't know, for, for me, quite frankly, this budget, I mean, in terms of process and in terms of this, and Steve, I don't want to steal your thunder, so I apologize for this. But I think because we've, we've worked together for a number of years now, as we, I mean, going four years now, in our third really big budget, I think that we kind of all know where the money's at. We know what, what to do. We, and I think we are able to explain it much more articulately than we have maybe three years ago, for example, when, where you didn't know where every single line was. We're, we're in a very different place, I think, this year. And so, I think, I think it was just a much smoother process for, for us. I speak for us, but I, I don't know about the school committee, you know?
I think, I think it's been a very smooth process as well.
I think so.
I, I can remember the first year with certain people who, who, you know, kind of like deep dived into like every number. But we kind, we kind of, you know, the responsibility for putting it together is, is the superintendent's and we just kind of supervise the process and make sure things are going along.
And the goal is ultimately that the members of the committee understand the process and all the moving parts. And that, I think this was the first year we gave the new members an orientation to the process.
Try to explain some of the, some of the more abstruse things in the budget to, to, you know, how things are done.
Well, and I think, I think, too, every month, and we've given the update, you know, since all the way along. So, I think that, you know, I, I look back and I think that this, this school committee that's sitting around this table right now is probably the most informed in terms of every single month, you, you're getting something. And that wasn't always the case. And so, I think that I give all kinds of credit and kudos to previous school committees who put us on this track that we're on now. So, it's not a surprise that you get it the week before you're supposed to, you know, vote it in and you've got an idea. Or like even sending out the email that I did yesterday, saying, "Okay, here's where we're at now." You know, like, and so, I think we've, we've worked really hard to try to make sure that everybody has an understanding. And then we always offer if you need additional meetings or, we're always open to that, too. But you might not feel that need either.
Thank you. So, then the next goal is under community relations. And that first bullet, school committee will review district's comprehensive communication plan. I think Mike and Elaine spoke to that. And that goal has expanded with the, the personnel subcommittee. So, we look forward to hearing more about the specifics of that. And then the second bullet about the policy subcommittee reviewing the policy for citizens comments. I spoke about this right at the beginning of the year. We were ready to move on this. And then was reminded by our legal counsel and MASC that there are implications for that based on a ruling, I think, last year, Spalding versus the Natick School Committee. And so, our, our legal advisors and MASC are, are, will be giving us proposed guidelines.
And direction.
For that. So, there'll be more coming from that. And then, conduct of meetings. School committee will convene an ad hoc committee to make recommendations regarding how to make the school committee meeting conducive to productive discussions and decision-making. Any updates?
Well, I will tell you this, that Mary and I did meet back in the fall.
Yep.
And some of Mary's recommendations have already been implemented. I do, I have to say, I do think that from where we were last May, and I, I don't know, maybe the, the jury is still out on this, but I do think that what Mary suggested regarding the reconfiguration of the room and the chairing of the chairs and whatever, I think has been most conducive to a more equitable environment for people. Nobody feels, you know, pushed in the back there. But what ended up happening was we were supposed to meet a second time, to, you know, accept minutes and to either, you know, continue with the work or to disband the committee. But we had some scheduling issues last fall.
Okay.
Technically, we're still in the existence process. So, I'm going to have to set up a date for Mary and I to meet again sometime in the near future to make any further recommendations.
Well, we're going to need some, we're going to have three additional members.
Yeah, and I was thinking of that, too. But I was thinking, you know, maybe we just keep it going for a little bit longer until the members are on, so.
Yes, Mary.
So, I just want to thank Lea, too, because as we talked about the table configuration and came in, boom, the tables are closer together. There are more chairs here. And even when the parents came in, we had chairs for the people. And we could even get more chairs if needed. So, a couple of the things that we thought of, boom, they just, they just happened. But they didn't just happen, thank you, Lea. So, that's, that's the beginning. And we can, as, as we have more members, too, I keep looking around the table and thinking, "Okay, what is this going to look like? Where are they going to be? How are we going to place them and, and make sure that we still all have room? Because there's room for you, there's going to be people coming." But we just have to figure that out.
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
No.
Okay. So, another goal that has emerged, and I think it was through our examination of policies, particularly policy JIV with regard to student voice and decision-making. And so, Leah, and I know that there's several of us who have been invited to things at the high school involving student voice or watching presentations. But I'm going to let Leah speak to some recent initiatives through policy about, in particular, student representation to the school committee.
Yeah, so, one of the things that we heard pretty loud and clear at the beginning of this school year is that students didn't really have a visible avenue to communicate with the school committee. And so, in the spirit of the law that Joe was talking about, we are considering ways that we can leverage that student seat on the school committee and perhaps make them that avenue that students are seeking so that they can communicate with us regularly and it can become a two-way street. So, Kathy and I had our subcommittee meeting today at the high school with Principal Colleen and Ms. Early, who is the student leadership advisor at the high school. And we shared ideas on how we might make that position one in which the student body can kind of be present with us and exercise their voice. And so, she's going, she had all kinds of great ideas and she's going to run a few, a few of them through her student council and hopefully implement that position by September, October of next year.
But I do want to add that Leah brings a lot of experience with this to the table. and she was sharing some of the things that they do at her high school with what they call it, a community council?
Yeah, so we, Mary is actually the architect.
Your name came here.
One of the, one of the architects of this system that still looms at Hudson High School. So we call ourselves a community council, but it is a student council and it basically is structured exactly like Nishoba, where there are class officer liaisons that participate with us. The body is a school-wide, school improvement entity and, you know, charged with assessing and improving school climate. And so we were just talking back and forth, Kim and I were, about all the things that our community council does to try to gauge the student body, to be a voice for them. And then how one of our executive board members is actually a representative on the Hudson School Committee. And, and whereas I love what Ibi does, she gives this wonderful presentation of all the amazing things. Ours doesn't do that and so we're looking to perhaps add that to their job description. Kim was saying that perhaps Ibi's position can be added to and that that person can be that conduit. Please do, body.
Mike?
You said that we're hoping to get these implemented September, October. Does that mean that that would be in time to maybe assign those, I guess, new responsibilities to the rising student rep?
Yes.
For, for the upcoming school year?
Definitely.
Great.
So we didn't feel like we should be changing it midstream.
Right, right. Just, just the October thing threw me off because.
Yeah, so the, the student body doesn't, so their student council at Nishoba High School is a volunteer organization. So it's not elected, whereas the class officer positions that we are. And so this student council is a volunteer organization with kind of willing student leaders, which is kind of nice because then everybody can participate, it's not exclusive. And so then within that group that comes together in September, they then elect within their executive board, their vice president. And so one of the members of that exec board could become the student who sits with us every other week and can provide a really, you know, a vetted, but also a complete report on how the students are doing, how they're feeling and what they would like us to know. And then we can communicate here with the student president and provide feedback, provide questions, and they can bring it then back to the student body and to Ms. Early, who's their advisor, to kind of keep the conversation going around.
So that's, and I think the conversation will continue. I think that Steve and Kim were really interested in a lot of the ideas that Leah shared from her experience just in terms of doing a survey, just to see what's going on for kids. And they were, you know, skeptical about doing a survey and tell what you do in Hudson.
Yeah, so in Hudson, we tried to do kind of periodic surveys of the student body just to say, you know, how's it going? What are you feeling? What are you seeing? And so we were talking today that basically you just make a QR code and you can, you know, put it on all the lunch tables and the kids have Snapchat installed and, right, like maybe you just snap the QR code and it brings them to a Google form where it basically says, we were saying how we could, and this is basically based upon what you were saying yesterday, Lee. We could say, you know, what do you love about Nishoba High School? What's awesome there? Because there's so many awesome things. Now, how would you like to do the move? Right, so they have to provide both sides of the coin. And that will, and then the student leaders would be in charge of collating all that information, looking for trends. And then, you know, the, in addition to the faculty advisor input, they could bring it to the principal, they could bring it to us. But it's just one way to kind of get the pulse periodically and it makes students feel like they have some skin to gain, so to speak. Yeah, like in Hudson, one of the things they didn't like is that there was no water filter. So the community council went about raising, you know, $1,200, I think it was, and we worked with facilities to get it installed for free. And it was totally student-driven. So just like silly, all the way from silly things to really big things.
Mary, I just want to add too, it's so wonderful to hear that community council is still, is still going on. And when you talk about the fact that it's similar to a student council, it is. Although the representation is proportional to the number of people who are being represented. For example, there are many more students on community council than there are faculty. And so everyone sitting around the round table is, is an equal member. And so you have faculty and you have students, but because there are more students than faculty, which makes so much sense, you know, students have more weight in terms of decision-making. And so that's, that's, that's pretty exciting and that's been going on for a long time. Could it be 2001 to?
Was it in the old school?
Ooh, yes, yes.
And so, I mean, that, that philosophy was actually brought into the construction of the new high school. Like building spaces that this student leadership, like these petri dishes could really thrive, so.
Well, it's very exciting and I think that, again, we, we had this, this germ of dissatisfaction with the way something was and Joe took the point with the state to get rid of it. But this, something really wonderful can come for it. So it's very exciting and I appreciate your taking the leadership on this and look forward to hearing more about it. Okay?
Great.
Thank you. Anything else we've got to our goals? I think we're doing a pretty good job. But that's me, I'm biased. Okay, so at this time, we have the DECA field trip cost update. I would like to invite Starros to come and speak with us. Thank you so much for coming.
It was great to be here. I know the fourth year is a long time, but it's good to see that I have a new crop coming.
Oh, new crop coming, yes.
There are some good presenters, I can use them tomorrow on my field trip. So I'm glad to be here. I know you guys discussed it at the last meeting and I know there's some questions that came about from the trip. So I can, I can talk a little bit about it?
Why don't you talk, give us a little bit of a broad overview? By the way, thank you so much for the email with all of the, that really, I think that probably answered most of the questions, to be honest with you. But I think it's really important that you're here tonight. Thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, no problem.
And thank you for all the work you do with that organization. Oh, my gosh, they're amazing. We feel that kind of pride that we felt tonight with these younger people with what you're, you're doing with your students.
Thank you.
So we thank you so much, Starros.
So just try to keep it brief because I know we don't have too much time. Nishoba DECA is the biggest group in Nishoba now. I think we had 203 members this year.
Wow.
So every year, I've been here 10, it's my 10th year in the district. And when I first started, I used to beg kids because I was a part-time teacher and I was the only business teacher. And I used to, please join DECA, please, because I did it in high school and I know the effect that it had on me and how it led me down a career path of business. And so we're done begging because like every year we've gotten bigger and bigger and bigger and the kids really find it useful. And I, I know we've sent a lot of kids to business school now, which makes me really proud and my counterpart, Taren Grig, is really proud. So 203 kids is, is great, it's a lot to manage. So as you can see, like the costs have kind of gone up and up and up every year because I'd say, I'd say we've had growth of about 20 to 30 students every single year. So we started with, my first year, I think we had 20 students and we've wrapped it to 203. So want me to talk about the DECA season a little bit?
Yep, yes, please.
We start off with a mock competition in December. And I know Kathy and some school committee members in the past have come down and judged our fake competition to get us ready for our very first competition, which is held at UMass Lowell in January. So that's just a one-day quick event. The cost of that one was only $50 and that was mostly just for lunch and transportation. After UMass Lowell, we lost about 40 of our, about 50 of our students that didn't move on and didn't qualify for the next round. So we had about 140 or so qualify for state. States is the best of the best. So we're going up against the eight DECA districts. And they send the top 40 groups in each category in DECA. All in all, there's about 3,300 kids at the conference that we, we head to tomorrow. So it's a really big event. It used to be held in different various spots around the, around the state and now we're in Boston and that's pretty much the only place we fit. So we, we started off at, as in the Marriott Copley Hotel, which is a really huge hotel. And now we've even expanded out of that. So we're actually staying in the Sheraton this year. We got bumped a couple of weeks back and the Sheraton is just right next door. It's still connected to the Fridential Center. So DECA uses the Sheraton, the Westin this year too, and the Marriott Copley. And we do all our big meetings behind the convention center. So kids will present their business plans, their marketing plans, their community service projects. They really compete in a lot of different avenues. So pretty much this, if you're interested in cars or in fashion, there's always something that kids can kind of go towards what they're passionate about and, and select a project. And my classes are very product-based learning, so it's not a lot of kids saying, this is boring because they, they chose what they were doing. So there's a lot of ownership and kids really tend to like it. The trip itself, should I move on to questions now? Yeah, so if you guys have any questions for me, that, I know the cost was $430. I'll briefly tell you guys, I think, did everyone get a copy of the email? I have some here if anyone needs one. The registration was $240, which includes the use of all those areas that I told you guys that we're, we're competing in. So the kids compete in the Heinz Convention Center and we use a giant ballroom there for our big events, award ceremonies, guest speakers, opening ceremony. The hotel is another pretty big cost, it was $125 per student, but that's for two nights at the Sheraton, which, you know, it's not too bad when you divide it out. Transportation's the, so last year, the cost of this trip was $415. I'd say we went to $430 this year, A, because we have more kids and our fundraising dollars got stretched thinner and thinner. But also our transportation has gotten up quite a bit in the last couple of years, I think, changing, I don't know. I'm not, I don't know why, but I know our bills that way have gotten much higher. We also do apparel for the kids. So today, tomorrow, when we go into Boston, we all wear a DECA quarter zip and a DECA t-shirt. The chaperones have helped us keep an eye on all our kids because we're all wearing the same thing. So it's kind of genius, but for the kids, they really love it because, you know, we look like a team and we're not just a bunch of individuals showing up to a hotel. So came up to $430 this year. So that, we've had a couple of big sponsors in the past and Clinton Savings Bank has been a huge, huge, huge partner of ours for pretty much all 10 years that I've been here. They've always been our biggest, most helpful sponsor. Last year, they donated $2,500 and anytime that I run into a problem, they're always there to help. They're always judging for us, they've been a huge, huge help. Last year, we were able to recruit an AIS, which I think you guys are really familiar with. They donated $2,000 to our program and they're an awesome, great organization and also brings in judges. So like we have two really great partners. We haven't got their donations so far this year, so we're a little bit behind on actually getting those in. All in all, I guess the, the, the real story is that we're getting bigger and bigger and fundraising is kind of not growing along with the, with the growth of, of our program. So the costs are definitely going up. I can tell you that I was one of those students that kind of needed some financial assistance when I was younger. So I'm really sensitive to that and we always kind of keep some funds aside for students that, that need it. So for states, we had, I sent out a survey to all the kids and I say, you know, can you t-shirt size for when we order all these things, you know? Parents email so we can contact them and all that. And then the last one is, do you need financial assistance? And there really isn't like, you know, there's no show me tax returns or anything crazy like that. It's just, do you need it? Sure, that's it. That's all we really, if you, if you ask, you get. And, and I usually just have a quick conversation with the student to kind of talk it over. And I think we're helping, you know, between eight to 10 kids this year for the state trip. So we tend to save most of our fundraising dollars for the Nationals trip. So we don't know how many kids are going to be. I'll check back in a couple of days, I can tell you how many kids will qualify for Nationals because we leave tomorrow. But we tend to save a lot of our fundraising dollars for that trip because that one's really expensive. We're, you know, going away for five days. The, the trip this year is to Nashville, Tennessee. So you'll have another trip request from me really soon. So if you guys have any questions.
No, that's terrific. I think you did a great job. Thank you.
So the, the final cost of $430 is that based on the anticipation of the $4,500 from your sponsors or not?
No, that, so if I, if I don't have the money, I can't, I, I've already kind of paid the, for the trip already. So I didn't have it at the time, so I couldn't use it to, to freight the cost.
And so if you get those donations, those will go into your fundraiser for like Nationals, so.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't, I, I wanted to share the, I know we were interested in the breakdown and the cost and everything and this may be another discussion for another time. But I guess my concern is that this is a, an activity based on a curriculum program and it seems like $430, this is not, I'm just mad at the universe, not you, because you're doing a great job. But, and again, the question for me is how do we support this opportunity without asking our families to pay that much? And I think the robotics team is in a similar situation.
Robotics is exactly the same.
So, and again, it's a curriculum program. Our, our students are good enough to be in these, well, the local statewide national competitions and it's costing them a lot of money. So I, I would like for, to put this in our parking lot to look at. I mean, the breakdown, it is, as we say, it is what it is. But I'm looking at the D buses is the, and don't they have, don't we have a contract with them? They can't help us out? I mean, I mean, I'm just being rhetorical here, but, but anyway, the idea is, you know, get a voucher, I don't know. But anyway, we, we want the kids to have these opportunities, but to have a larger discussion about it at some point, because I do think this is such, they honor us so much by the work that we do and we're so proud of them. And clearly you have built this program from the ground up and you have a lot to be proud of and such a great guy for the, and teacher for, for the kids to work with. This is, we've got to look at this.
I, I would totally agree.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I don't think it's fair either and for, for multiple reasons and different reasons for both organizations. You know, I can see DECA on one spot and robotics in another, you know.
But robotics just lost a major sponsor this year, you know, and so.
It's kind of like you can't count on sponsors. I think that that's really the message that, that we need to look at. And Pat and I have had this conversation for the past couple of years. I get, so I would agree, I think it's time for us to have a different discussion.
So I'm going to close this discussion in four minutes, so Mary, do you have questions?
Okay, first of all, thank you for coming tonight because answering, yeah, our questions is very helpful. And I also think informing the committee about what DECA is and what it does. I just have one idea for you, you've probably thought of this before, but your most important resource besides yourself, your students.
Yes.
And so to have a component in, in the curriculum, well, the fundraising aspect that everybody would have to, to use the brain power, to use the contacts of those young people, that this becomes part of the course. I just think it, you know, there's, they can do incredible things.
I agree.
And so they might ask, you know, an uncle who works for some, but just to consider that, that's your best resource, really.
I completely agree because we could do much more successful things that way than, you know, a little fundraiser selling donuts somewhere.
Right, and so have it be part of, and part of what they're doing for making those connections, networking. And if they have to do, you know, like five or 10, and just see what comes out of that. You never can tell.
Yeah, we, we have a big officer team this year and we have about nine officers on our team. And then we have a mentor team too, that's new this year, where we have kids that help underclassmen with their projects. And we, we brought all them all in and we had this big fundraising, fundraising, let's go, let's do this. And we, we assigned two businesses to each kid and hasn't gone so well. This has been a rough fundraising year for sure. We're feeling the effects of it.
But just think, why?
And I've been off of paternity leave, so we're kind of like a little bit behind on getting some money in from like the recurring relationships we've had in the past.
But I, I do think that Kathy's point is well taken. I, I, you know, and I, I'm very respectful of exactly what you're saying and, and I understand that. But there's a piece of me too that philosophically struggles with, with the fact, like I, I don't, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that you, you might, and I'm not saying that you do feel like this, but you might feel that you need to justify this or justify the fundraising when this is such a tremendous program that's servicing 203 of our children. You know, there's, that's more than some of our courses service, like what you think about it. Like, so I really think it's time for us to take a different look at funding and not be so heavily reliant on. But this she says tonight, she's going to talk about the budget, but I mean, you know, the bottom line is I think that, I think it should fall more under our umbrella.
So we will take it up?
Yeah, I put it on the parking lot.
Okay, Starros, thank you so much.
Thank you, so nice to see you. Thank you for all you do.
Good luck, good luck.
We'll be sending good vibes your way.
We'll give you an update.
Yeah, we'll look forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the MSBA update.
Sure, so we're going to talk feasibility study in a minute here, so I'm going to have Pat come to the table as well. And I know that we've got a slide that we're going to put up. But, but before we go into that, we're going to, and if you can queue up our, our video there for our little friends in the chirping, that would be great, or I don't know if Todd can help you with that. One of the, one of the interesting components of all of this is, is the outreach to our staff. And when I'm, when you're walking through the hallways and talking to staff about, you know, what, things that they're experiencing or whatnot. And, and, you know, like Joe, Joe McCarthy and I had a, a great conversation this morning, kind of based on a very long email he sent me, you know. Well, one of the emails that came in, I, I said, do you mind if I share this with school committee? Because I just, there was a piece of me, and, and I thought, you can tell she's an English teacher, because there's a piece of me that says, it was so well-written that I, I was bursting out laughing and yet there was a piece of me that was so sad. And so I, I said to her, do you mind if I, if I share this with the school committee? So I'm going to read you this first and then we'll, we'll go through a couple of little clips here to give you a flavor. So this, this is from Maura Bailey and she said, my name is Maura Bailey and I teach English in room 215 at the high school. I just wanted to drop you a note. I just wanted to drop you a note to provide reason number seven hundred and thirty-six, I'm not sure if you've got that number, as to why a new building is imperative for our school community. Every year, at approximately the end of March, the entire English hallway is overrun by bird nests in the walls. The birds break into the walls from the internal courtyard between the English and history halls, and they pack through the cement between the bricks where they build nests in the walls. When the eggs hatch a few weeks later, our classes are constantly serenaded by these baby birds, which is sweet, for about two days. However, I never realized how loud a nest of baby birds is, and by the time the birds are ready to fledge the nest, the chirping is consistent background noise, which is distracting it best and entirely unhealthy. The nests exist above the hard ceiling in our classrooms, but in the spring, when it gets warm, our classrooms develop a pungent odor that has to be from the fecal matter the birds produce, and I'm sure that there are bird carcasses in there as well. And we don't get only one nest per season. Once one nest fledgeses, we can be assured that there will be at least two more cycles of nests before the end of the school year. She said, our custodial staff has gone above and beyond over the past few years to try and prevent the birds from breaking into the building. They've used all kinds of cement patches to attempt to block access, but the birds are smart, and they're motivated to find a safe place to raise their babies. And while the idea of reading Shakespeare or Morrison to a chirping nest of baby birds might sound really appealing, I can assure you that most of the English staff would be thrilled if we didn't have to compete with them for our students' attention. And so, and, and she goes on a bit more, um, and then, a- and so she and I had corresponded back and forth a bit. And so then she sent me another email, and, so I went, we won't share all of these with you, but she basically, uh, and I'm hoping that the sound is loud enough so that you can see what this is really like in her classroom.
What was your question earlier, about the health of the building?
There's a tricky balance involved here.
Who is healthy enough to raise baby birds?
And she was saying, like, that's all through MCAS, right? Like, this, this noise is, it, it, it's consistently there. And I think she's done it over like one or two years, so I mean, it, it's not just like last season type thing. So we, we just need to do one more, just to give you the flavor. And in one of these videos, you see the students just sitting there, and they're just going about their business, and she's trying to teach, and you think, oh, my goodness, you know, and I, so I think one of the, the interesting things, a- again, because I am at the school a lot, um, I, I do receive like these types of emails, hey, just so you know, this is going on in this hallway, and that's going on, that, and things that, stories I never would have known otherwise. So, um, special thanks to Maura for sending this in, and to all the teachers who have sent me, um, numerous, uh, stories about what's happening in their hallways, that otherwise, we wouldn't know, because, you know, you, you're looking really at the building itself, the facility, the cracks, the, the heating systems, this kind of, this would never have occurred to me. Um, so, of course, you, you know that I went right to Rob, right away, and said, okay, is, and he said, yep, it's been a problem for years. And so I guess today, they, they had a lift out there today, trying to add new ways of trying to keep control of these birds, but, you know, you think about mice, or you think, you know, you think about that kind of thing, or hornets, and, I mean, is, uh, you were in my office, was it last night, and, and they dive-bomb me here, the, the, the stink bugs, and the, and the hornets are always, they're always dive-bombing me in my office, so we think about that kind of thing, we don't necessarily think about birds, you know, so. So anyway, I thought I would start with that, so thank you, um, Alita, if you could put up that slide now, that would be terrific. So, our, our next step now is going to be, okay, we're in the eligibility period, we're gonna look forward now to that, that feasibility period. I'm just gonna put up a quick slide here, we had discussion at the last meeting, but you didn't really give me direction, and so I really am asking for some direction tonight, so we're just gonna go through this. Uh, during the feasibility study, and I think this is maybe as much for our community as, as it is for us tonight, the district collaborates with the MSBA to, first of all, generate an initial space study, which we've kind of already done, quite frankly, we, again, as Todd said, we're really well ahead of ourselves in this project. Document existing conditions, establish design parameters, and that's, of course, what the folks will do for the, during the feasibility study time period. Develop and evaluate preliminary and final alternatives for a building project, and keep in mind, and we want to say this again, we are, we're not under the, um, preconceived notion that this is going to be a full building. We have to wait until the feasibility study comes back and shows us options that are available for our communities to think about. And then recommend the most cost-effective and educationally appropriate solution to the MSBA Board of Directors, and remember that they, they have to take several votes on this, and we have to work in tandem with them. So, we do all kinds of preliminary work, and then, you know, we'll talk about like the feasibility study now, but they have to take the vote on whether we're ready for the feasibility or study or not, before we can actually go, go in to do it. So really, what we're looking for right now is to say, okay, we need to have some, some funds available for us in order, for us to do this. We've talked this through the last meeting as well, um, we explained what, what we've, um, heard back from other, uh, building projects and what they've said to us, we've had lots of discussion with Jake Foster on this. So I feel that, you know, and, and the number that we consistently see in all of these is basically, for schools our size, around that one point five to around two million dollars is what they suggest. And in part, remember, that's because you don't want to have to go back after and say, okay, it, you know, we only afforded ourselves one million, but it's actually one point three, and then to go back out, you know, we just don't want to do that.
Sure.
And, uh, remember too, that these modules all have kind of like time limits on them. And when we move into the actual, um, eligibility period, like, we're just pre-that right now, that's June first, but then there's two hundred and seventy days thereafter, that we have to make sure that the funding is in place for us, we don't have to borrow it then, we just have to make sure that we've got access to it. So we are able to take this, basically, go out for the, the funding prior to the start of the June first, and I know you all, this, I'm just saying this one more time, that, out there. So that's kind of where we're at right now, um, we've got the language, uh, ReadyPat has been working on it, um, that we received from the MSBA, uh, that needs to be forwarded to the, uh, the towns to go on to the warrants. So that's kind of where we're sitting tonight, I don't know, uh, Dr. McGuire, if you've got anything else to add tonight, did I miss anything today?
No, I don't think, I, we, we certainly wanted to provide, you know, specifics around, you know, the community, what a feasibility study entails, and, you know, why we ask for, or asking for in terms of the amount of work that is involved, uh, in the work that we already have begun, um, so that we can provide, you know, the information essentials to the communities, as well as MSBA, that we are ready for such a project.
So, when you say you're looking for direction from us, what you want us to do is to, um, authorize an amount, a do-not-exceed amount?
Right, that's really what I'm looking for, is a do-not-exceed amount.
And so, we sort of touched upon this last week, and I know MSBA had said we're looking at a one point five to two million, and then I think somebody heard from a, a town, it's for.
I think it was Ms. Mary.
Yes, that if we could keep it do-not-exceed one point five, um, I don't know if we have, ever heard from other towns, would you?
No.
Too, then. The other thing I think to keep in mind is that, when this vote goes forward, that it requires approval of all three towns.
That's correct.
So, um, just as I, I mentioned when we were talking about the budget and coming in at, at three percent, that I think we have to, um, nobody wants to be caught short, but when you get a message like that, I, I think it would behoove us to seriously consider it. My concern would be going for do-not-exceeding out of two million dollars, and then not having it pass and having to come back. But, uh, why don't, um, we take a few minutes, I'd like to hear what folks think, Steve?
Okay, first, first of all, I think if we do get a new high school, we have a, we already have a use for the old high school, we can turn it into an aviary.
Thank you.
However, however, there was one thing last time that I was not a hundred percent sure of my understanding. The borrowing for the study, does that ultimately get rolled, so that it ultimately gets rolled into the total amount of borrowing for whatever the construction evolves? So that it's not a long-term commitment for the three towns to say, no more than two million dollars. It is a number that we're saying not to exceed two million dollars, but it's also, has to be understood that this money will ultimately be rolled into the total cost of whatever we do, and will not be a separate borrowing, bonding, whatever you want to, however you want to call it, so that it will not impact the total towns, each of the towns' borrowing levels, once the borrowing, or once the commitment to, to do the construction, it's not, it'll be rolled into that. So it's not a separate issue that will be separately bonded, it's something that will have the bond, in other words, if we bond the million and a half or two million dollars now, that will be paid off relatively quickly with funds that are allocated, or funds that are bonded for
The total.
The ultimate, the ultimate construction costs, and I think that's important for all of the towns to understand.
Is that correct, Pat?
Yes, that ultimately, that is what would happen.
Okay.
The, but we also want to go, go forward, we said this last time too, and I bet you, Pat, this is on the tip of your tongue, ready to say too, and Steve, you're absolutely right, the, the concern would be if we do nothing, if we end up doing nothing at all on this project, then, a- as, and you know that, then, and we've said that around this table, then you do own that, but you're absolutely right. And I think that we, we really recognize the critical importance, um, of going out and reaching out into our communities and letting them know all this kind of information, not just around this table here. And that was a discussion that we had the, the other day, yesterday, actually. And, and that's why the students are, you know, preparing their work right now to help support us with this, and, you know, we talked today about the fact that none of the students sitting around me to- today are going to benefit from this, and they all know that, they say, we're doing this for the next generation of learners, they know that.
Sure.
You know, so I, I think that, um, and, and I think one of the other things, and, um, you're not alluding to this at all, but I, I'd like to bring it up right now, because we had this discussion yesterday, touched on it a little bit in, um, in the, uh, meeting for communication, is the cost associated with potentially not doing anything? And I think that that's something that our communities really need to think upon as well. So for example, you know, um, if that roof needs to be done, like, completely done, you're looking at millions. If, if that whole system, the HVAC system needs to be completely redone, that's not a, that's not even a hundred thousand dollar project. Like, you're, like, all of these projects are going to be huge, and then you're still gonna be left with a seventy-year, an eighty-year-old building, you know, so there's that piece, and, and, you know, I've said this before too, you know, you have to keep in mind that sixty-one applications were made this year for new buildings through MSBA, and only eleven were put forward. We were one of the eleven. I'm pretty sure that if we turn this down or don't go through with this, I'm not so sure that they'd be quick to look at us again for another, I don't know, couple of years or a decade, like, I, I think you really need to think of that, because there's, there's a buildup in the state.
I, I think it's about money right now.
Oh, totally.
I think we agree, Mike wanted to say something.
Um, I, I mean, I agree, it's about money, but I also want to speak to Steve's point and what you just said, because I was just about to say it. I think the success that we meet with the towns is going to be directly dependent on their level of, um, being informed. Because I think if you put yourself in the perspective of a typical community member, they don't know the details that we know, even we don't know all of the details that you know, and so I think they're that much further removed. Um, I don't know if I thought this or said this last week, but, um, when Dr. Foster came and gave us that process overview, there was that one slide that put everything into context, that this is the first in many, many steps that has to happen. And so I, you know, I keep thinking, what does the average community member know or not know, and what would they need to know? And so, like you said, the more information you can provide the communities with, the towns with, um, in a concise and kind of palatable way, I think that that's going to increase their level of comfort with deciding what the right move is. I don't know if at the town meetings, we can provide, um, residents with sort of a packet, uh, a handout, something that summarizes, here are some sort of, like, the facts, like you said, that statistic of eleven out of however sixty-some districts, this process overview, um, the cost, you know, the cost of not doing this, um, I think all of that is really critical, especially if you want to increase our chances for getting this passed from all three towns.
Steve?
I, I think that everybody is familiar, and should be familiar, with the idea that I now have a car that's eight to ten years old. Things are beginning to go on it. So the question is, am I going to keep putting good money after bad? Which in the, in our case is, is similar to the high school that's now six, fifty to sixty years old? Or am I gonna go out and buy, buy a new car? Now, whether I'm gonna buy a totally new car, or whether I'm just gonna buy a newer car, knowing that once again, I'm gonna face some of these issues sooner rather than later, this is, this is something that everybody can understand.
But I think we're talking about, and, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, I think we all understand that this is gonna be a major, um, cell, and that, to, to both your points, it's got to be organized in a way so that people really understand all the moving parts. I think for today, we're not doing that plan today, and I know Brooke will talk about what's in the works to build the, the level of communication and information that people need. We need to give direction about the amount of money that we want to authorize for, um, the feasibility study, Leah?
So, uh, just two quick things, correct me if I'm wrong, if we go ahead with whatever construction project they recommend in the feasibility study, the feasibility study gets rolled into the larger bond, which means it gets partially.
That's exactly what he just said.
But partially reimbursed.
That's correct.
And that's exactly right.
So that's very important information, and you know, it could be thirty-five percent, it could be forty-five percent, we're not sure yet, but, um, a lot of that cost will be freed by the MSBA.
Yes.
Um, the second thing I would say is that because we're asking for, um, if we were to say one point five to two mil, or not to exceed two million dollars, we really do mean not to exceed, and it's in all of our interests as residents and taxpayers to keep that cost as low as possible. What is not in our interest is to find out that it costs one point seven million, and then we have to go back through the political process, we would have to have another special election, that then costs us more money.
Yeah.
I think that putting the language in to not exceed two million dollars is responsible government, and that we are the trustees of that money, and we will make sure that the cost is as responsible as we can make it, as, as much as the market will allow.
Other, Alina?
Yeah, I mean, for me, when I think about, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but what would your feasibility study get you? It gets you all the way to schematics for multiple options of building projects.
That's important for folks.
And I say, and when I think about that, I'm like, two million dollars for, let's say, three schematic-level design plans for options? That doesn't seem unreasonable to me, um, and I'm, my concern is that if you cut corners in the planning in order to come in under a predetermined amount of money, um, that filters into the actual construction, which filters into like problems a lot, a lot longer down the road, and I'd rather get the planning done really well.
Sure.
Um, than, 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 you know, try to, to hit some target that, that is underneath, you know, maybe what reality is, we don't really know.
Just, just as a very quick point of clarification, would we, would the language be not to exceed the total cost? Or would it be not to exceed the amount divided up by the three towns?
We, it's one amount, not to exceed two million dollars, and then I don't know how it's decided, how it gets divided.
And, and I would assume that it would probably be typical as, as. Right, and, and I would assume that it would probably be typical as, as all of our borrowing is. It would, it would follow the same pattern as we, for example, we just followed with the Leach Field and Oil Tank. So whatever that percentage is for each community would be the same.
Is that like a given, or is that to be negotiated?
No, I believe that's the given. I think that that's just a standard practice.
Yes.
I think that language is important.
It's, it's the assessment.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it's a given, that's fine, but I think it's important for, just for the details, for the work that towns do.
Mary?
So to look back on how we came up with 1.5 to 2 million, it was really by looking at what other districts had, had paid.
And talking to other districts, yes.
Yeah, we made some phone calls and then to try to come up with a number. But we need, we really truly need a range for that, only because every year, things cost more money.
That's true.
And we don't want to put ourselves in that position where we only put in 1.7 and it comes in at 1.8. So now, yeah. It's just difficult for us to be able to make a determination, not knowing what the factors are under 1.5 versus 2 million. You know, we're, we're really looking at numbers and thinking, you know, I am, thinking like, what's, what's a better sell? You know, 2 million sounds like a lot more than 1.5 million. I mean, without knowing specifically that this is what this would do, 1.5, and this, and 2 million would give us this, and that's usually what we do when we're coming up with numbers.
But if it's a do not exceed mo-, because we don't know, I mean.
I was gonna say, we don't, yeah, we don't know.
Until this point, if it's 1.5, if we do not exceed, but it comes out at 1.6, we're off to the races again. So it's, any other, yes.
And so are you, are you saying that the chances are a lot less likely that it would come in at 2.1?
I, I don't think, yeah.
I would say so, based.
Based on what we've seen.
Yeah.
I, I don't see that at all.
Okay.
Based on, you know, enrollments for other high schools and costs that have come in for other school districts, so, I mean.
I think the 2 million just keeps it safe. I think that's really how we look at it.
Yeah, Joe?
I'm sorry, just a quick, quick point of clarification. So we were talking about the idea of if you didn't go for the 2 million, we went for 1.5 million, we'd have to go back for further approval if money, more money was needed. I just want to clarify, my colleague from Stowe said, special election, it wouldn't be a special, it would be a special town meeting.
Right, sorry, yes.
It's, it's clear.
Yeah, okay. Um, can we entertain a motion?
Uh, sure. Um, I would move to put forth to the member towns a borrowing or authorization of an amount not to exceed $2 million for the purpose of paying for a feasibility study for the Neshoba Regional High School.
Second.
Second.
For the discussions, question?
So, would there be a number between 1.5 and 2 million?
It could be.
Well, could we, could we entertain?
You could, but you're, you're still going to run it up against the same risk if it's 1.8 million or 1.9 million. It might be 1.2, we don't know. Like, we have to go through a whole process here, so it, I, I can see how you're thinking about, I, I really can't see how you're thinking about it, it doesn't really quite work that way. So we have to go out to, to bid, we have to work with MSBA through this, who will hold our hand in every step for the way, you know?
It's really out of our control when we get to that point.
Yeah.
So they haven't given you any kind of advisement because they can't really do that.
They can't.
Because you're not, we're not. What the market is. Yeah. And we have to go out to bid for this, so we're.
Mike, I'm sorry, Pat.
We're at the mercy of, you know, procuring this, according to the law.
Mike, is any lead?
Um, just to sort of circle back, it feels like a lot of my colleagues agree, but I think from an optical standpoint, if we were to undersell, I mean, I don't think that that would be a good look for us at all. I think it would suggest that we did not have foresight, and I think we would walk away with, with egg on our face if we were to have to go back for this special town meeting. I really, I really don't think, as, as, as much as I dislike spending money, especially other people's money, if we're going to do this, I think we have to do it in a way where we're safe rather than risking.
Okay. Yeah, I was just gonna say, like, it's, it's easy for someone from Stowe to say, let's go for the 2 million, because we're looking at the lowest budget number of the year as well, so there's probably a bit more goodwill in our towns right now, and flexibility there. But, you know, I don't, I don't know if 2 million, if 2 million needs to be the cliff, like, is 1.9 a better number? There's not really that big a difference in there. I mean, is that, is that the type of compromise we're looking for? Or if that's not even, if that's not going to cut it, then, then, okay, yeah, let's just stick with 2 million.
Other, Leah?
Um, two things. I think that our voters are savvy enough to know there's little difference in, like, after reimbursement especially, between 1.9 and 2 million, so, and I don't want to patronize anybody. Um, the second thing I would, I would ask is, once we go to bid, or if we go to bid, do we get three bids? Does, okay, so do, are we the deciders on which bid we go with, which architect slash?
There are rules.
I was gonna say, there's very specific rules around that, so I don't think it's going to be something that comes to this table to go through and take a look.
Oh, good.
And this is where it goes back to the procurement process, and, you know, it's very specific.
Okay. But we will be looking to get the most bang for our money.
Well, that's what we always do, though, that's part, I mean, for example, like, Pat has very specific training on just doing this kind of thing. She, actually, she just finished her, refreshed her the other day. Yeah, so, you know, there are very specific rules, and that's what we would follow.
And I feel like we have some evidence of that in what just happened with the Leach and Field and the Oil Tank, coming pretty decently under that do not exceed number.
That's a perfect example, because your do not exceed number was 600, and we came in right at, right at that 500, just a little, like, a dollar under type thing. So, yes, I would, and thank you for acknowledging that, I really appreciate that. And I think it is a good work of your office that does that. And, and we would say, very smooth projects, even though we had a little glitch or two that, that was out of our control, like finding the, the trash that was underneath the granite and such, but, I mean, but nonetheless, it was a very smooth project, so I think that we've, I think we've done well with that.
Other questions?
Mary?
Just, Brooke, have you talked to town managers? You've spoken to them about this, right? And so they're on board with it?
Oh, they absolutely know that this is happening. Again, remember, you'll recall that at the last meeting, I had mentioned, and Don Low was in the room when we said this, right? That it was really around that round table with the four of us that we said, it makes sense that we go out now for this. And they absolutely understand, and actually, you know, listening, Steve, to you tonight, explaining and articulating so eloquently the process, Don Low actually had explained that exact same process around the table with the four of us. So, I mean, we, they, they have a very clear understanding of how this is, this is to work.
But they meant the number, so.
Well, they know what the, they, they know what the numbers are, because we've been talking about the numbers all the way along, so I don't think anyone should be surprised by the number.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Um.
Just as a follow-up, have we tapped into our TAs to see what they would recommend bringing to the towns? I mean, I know that that is sort of certainly under our purview, but.
Right, I was gonna say, because it's, it would be under our purview, so I probably wouldn't.
Completely, I know, but did they, did they provide you any sense of, of insight or?
No, but I mean, we've, we've talked about that one, 1.5 million, they, they, we've all, for years, we've known that it was going to be in this ballpark. And exactly as you said, Pat, the, the cost is going to incrementally continue to go up every year. So I don't think they're going to be surprised by this at all, quite frankly. Because I don't want to speak for them, though, by the way.
I did one quick point, um, just so you know, and let, I, I did approach this subject with our select board chair, and I told him that this was the number that may be coming forward. So, as far as, you know, we have the TAs and obviously our select board chair. And again, I'm going to implore you specifically, and maybe in general, that, you know, we're going to be before the FinCon on the second, and I would really like to, since we're going to be moving on this tonight, you know, introduce this to the FinCon on the second.
So we, I certainly had every intention of doing that, because normally when we, we speak to our FinComs or the planning boards or wherever we're going, we bring up some of the key, whatever the key projects are that we're involved in, so that there's no surprises for them.
And I just wanted to share one comment from last year's events and whatever. One of the things that, and again, you know, I hear that, you know, voters are savvy in certain towns, and one of the things that came up last year was that I was very surprised to hear that there wasn't a real understanding of how the, the, the vision of obligation was spread across the district.
But see, I would say, please excuse me, I have to take responsibility of that, because I didn't think about it, it was presented as six, and so it, you, you're right, but it should have been 6,000, it's got to be a total not exceed, and then Lancaster's share would be blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
So I get it, and, and.
Can I, can I say this in this?
No, you're, no, go ahead.
As, as one representative from like, to another, I implore you to kindly stop falling on your side. You didn't do anything wrong, there was nothing. From my perspective, there was a lack of understanding on the voters regarding how the money is worked.
I'm going to take the last word on this, Joe.
Okay.
As a teacher, it is my responsibility to build understanding, and then if I am unsuccessful, then to analyze what went wrong.
I was.
Last word.
I was, I saw what you did, you did a masterful job.
I did it in kindergarten, not on the Leach Field. Okay. So are we ready to, to vote? Do you want to read the motion again?
I will reread the motion, to move to put forth to the member towns a borrowing authorization of an amount not to exceed $2 million for the purpose of paying for a feasibility study for the Neshoba Regional High School.
And Leah, you did the second?
I did.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, we're moving on to the grant information, the moment that our audience, our best television audience has been waiting for.
This is why I like my role, because now I can talk a little bit about us getting someone.
Yay!
Um, so, yeah, I, I spoke earlier about a grant that we received, that really goes hand-in-hand with the work that we're doing around the visioning around the new high school, or new project, or just visioning for Neshoba Regional High School. Um, and, you know, I, I really, really have to do and acknowledge my teaching and learning team. I have to acknowledge the work of Dr. Jake Foster, because he's the one who kind of brought this kind of grant to us and said, Neshoba is at a perfect, perfect situation to apply for this grant, and to receive this grant based on the work that we're doing and the place that we're in, in the district. So the article that I've handed out to you, it did go public a week ago. Neshoba Regional High School is one of six Massachusetts teams to head to California with a Next Generation Learning Center, which is located in Burlington, Vermont. They are a group that works specifically with schools on innovative practices and educational visioning. They are working in concert with the Barr Foundation. The Barr Foundation is a nonprofit organization that was founded in the late 1970s, and they work in Massachusetts, and they're located in Boston. And their work really is to work mostly with high schools at building excellent educators, excellent programming, and visionary programming. So the Barr Foundation is really funding this project for us. So we're one of six teams to be selected based on an application of need in terms of where we're at moving forward. The other school districts that were selected were Lowell, Milford, Mohawk Trail, Mount Wachusett Community College Foundation, and Springfield Public Schools. And we're going to be traveling with a team of 10 people from our community, including a school committee member, somebody from town management, several high school teachers, myself, Dr. Foster, and parts of component, parts of my teaching and learning team, to be heading to San Diego to visit Mission Vista High School. They have been characterized as a top learning innovation school and center, as well as district. And so we're working on doing some pre-work at going through our high school, doing what is called an observation protocol and note catcher protocol. We had our first webinar yesterday with Next Generation Learning Center, and to walk us through the process. So we're in the process now of soliciting a lot of information at our current high school through a variety of walkthroughs, a variety of observations, and we're putting together a ton of information for them, to give to them two and a half weeks before we leave. And they're going to take our information and match us up with a consultant, who's going to begin working with us, and then working with us when we get out there and match us with the appropriate people out in San Diego, to spend four days out there, and helping them, they're going to help us compile this new vision, new visioning for where we want to go with our high school. So this is a completely funded grant opportunity. They're paying the entire way for us to travel there, for us to stay there, for us to meet with consultants. And I do have to shout out to my teaching and learning team for the application, the grant application. Grant applications, as we know, often are, go above and beyond the workday. Um, you know, my team was working on this at night, getting feedback, Dr. Foster was giving us feedback. Um, and when we did get the letter that we were accepted, they advanced us immediately to not having to even interview with the process, the application was so strong. And it also speaks to that, that the need is strong, too. So we're thrilled with this opportunity. It's a fantastic opportunity to get out there and really just go and immerse ourselves in a model school that is high-tech, that is innovative, and that has teachers, administrators really focused on student learning. So that will take place from March 22nd to the 25th. Leah is going to join me and my team on that trip as a parent, as a school committee member in the district, also as an educator. So we're really excited about the opportunity. So it's really, really exciting for the district and the school moving forward.
We were thrilled. We were, honestly, we were just simply thrilled. It was just, oh my gosh, what an opportunity for us. And, you know, everybody who we connected with when we were looking at building this team was so gracious and so good to say, yes, count me in, I want to go with you. And so that, so we kind of took a look and, and wanted to make sure that we could, the, the teachers were the big, the big focus for us, and, and again, we wanted to look at one member from a community who was in the municipal government side of things, and so we're thrilled that we've got somebody joining with us with that, too. I'm not going, you're going, but it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun.
It's, and we've looked at the agenda, it's also going to be a lot of work.
A lot of work. Well, you fly out Sunday, I think you meet Sunday night, right?
Yeah, we'll fly out Sunday and meet Sunday night, and even the work, like, we had our first webinar yesterday, and the work that we're already compiling and working on, you know, just in this week, and we'll meet again on Friday, and then we'll meet again next week, and we've got to compile a lot of data to get to them, so that they can then be ready for us when we get there, so that they're pairing us up with the appropriate people and putting us with, you know, in the appropriate places for us, so that we can grow in the areas where they're, where they're, we're at, we are identifying need.
Could you, Mike?
Um, would, at this point, do you have any details about what the composition of our team is and the numbers?
I do, absolutely.
Yes.
So what, can you share that with us?
Yeah, it's, so they, they approve a team of 10 to go out, and they ask for, in the application, they wanted us to identify specific positions, and they, they gave us guidance based on teachers, administrators from central office, administrators that are involved in curriculum building, also people from community members, school committee, town managers and/or adminis-, you know, a town administrator. So we took a look, you know, broadly at, you know, who, who that might involve, particularly in our high school, and then in our community.
And those roles have all been filled at this point, right?
Yeah, and, and even in the application, we had to identify who that would be in the application.
The turnaround time was very, very quick for us, and even now, like, we're talking to you tonight about this, this was basically the tail end of February, and they're flying out the third week of March.
Yeah.
I get, the turnaround time is so quick. But I think all the credit, I think, to you, to your team, to those folks who work so hard on, and, and of course, Dr. Foster, for even bringing it to our attention, because otherwise we wouldn't have known about it. So, so just a fa- a fantastic opportunity, so thanks to everybody, and especially to Barr Foundation.
That's, it sounds wonderful.
This is right up your alley, I know that.
Oh, I know, yeah, that's so exciting. So what about, like, ballpark monetary, you know, value of this? And do, do you have any discretionary funds that come with this?
So they, they agree, you know, to, to fund the trip for us, it's roughly $1,500 a person as, as they, as they figure it out. In terms, so we determine the number of people that will go, and, but that, that's what it roughly breaks down to, per person attending, that it covers the airfare, the hotels, travel to and from, and they are providing meals for, for the team while we're out there.
But any other funding, you know, for the work that's, that's being done?
Like a stipend or anything?
Stipend, you know, just, do you have any discretionary?
No, I don't, no.
No?
No.
It's still wonderful.
It is. I'm so proud. I really am.
It's a great opportunity. So, and we'll have a chance also, I'm sorry, to, you know, to collaborate with those five other districts that are going with us. So we're all, we're all going at the same time. And taking a look at the agenda, they're really working hard to cross-pollinate schools and districts. So there's a lot of learning from each other as well as from the district we're going out to visit.
Other questions? Leah?
Can you guys just elaborate how, not all of these schools are undergoing the MSBA process.
No.
No.
However, it's on a serendipity that we are, right? Like can you speak to how this might dovetail into what this grant offers?
That was part of, certainly part of the grant application in terms of where we are at and that we had just been queued up in terms of an eligibility period for a new, for new program, programming at our high school level. This, both of the BAR Foundation and Next Generation Learning really focus on the high school student and taking their vision is taking a look at college and career-ready and what that means. So I think because we were in a specific place with this for our high school, it put us in a very good position. I think Dr. Foster felt the same way and I don't think he would have pushed us forward with this if he didn't think we really were prime candidates for it. I think you take a look at some of the other districts, as much as they're not in that process, they're probably, their applications probably spoke to similar positions or need in their districts. You can probably note that a lot of those districts are bigger, are bigger districts than ours. So I think because we are queued up in that, in this MSBA process and the need that we have there was a big part of our, our application.
Other questions? Just wanna echo what Brooke said. You give a lot of credit to your team, but the team needs a captain. And I think one of the real strength that I've seen over the years that I've been on, well, since you guys have been here, is your ability to get the right people on the bus, to get the work done that needs to be done. And so it's, it's a very strong team. I'm so glad that you're able to go, look at, you check a lot of the boxes, parent, educators, remember. But, and I know how hard it was and it was in a sense serendipitous, but, but your connection with Jake Foster and then his knowing about the BAR and then Todd cracking the whip over his team and teaching and learning people, I mean, everything just came together.
Yeah.
But thank you.
It was a great team effort, yeah, all the way around.
Everybody's been fantastic. And again, I'd say not one, you know, it was collaborative.
I think the fact too, we got the phone call and we knew that they were going to take, take us through the last step of the interview process because it was such a strong application.
Yeah.
It just volumes to us. It's like, wow, like our folks just did such a tremendous job. So, yes.
Last word.
I was also looking through the rubric that they're asking you to use as your observation tool. And so as much as I think it dovetails into the physical structure of our school community, what they're gonna be asking us to observe are relationships.
Mm-hmm.
Pathways. It's really a wholesale curriculum.
Student agency is a big one, student agency and, you know, the power that kids have that we'll see out there and what we, how we can provide that for our kids.
And project-based assessment and, you know, so it's curriculum, it's instruction, it's assessment, it's the social emotional learning piece and all that we can reap from the observation. It's really great and I really thank you for keeping me in.
Thank you. Okay, ad hoc MSBA communications subcommittee.
Sure, so I can start and then Leah and Elaine can chime in if there's anything I'm missing. I think that one of the things that we had talked about yesterday was because we feel that there's a time crunch here for us and I think that's kind of what you were alluding to earlier, Mike, as well, you know, we've only got so many weeks now until the first week of May, you know, and you back into that. We've, we've said that a number of times. And so we thought, you know, rather than calling ourselves or calling this as an ad hoc committee, we really see ourselves as part of a broader committee. And so I don't know that we want to necessarily have committee status to this particular group because they're two people, but we're looking at bringing two or three students on, we're looking at bringing two or three staff on, we'll be helping out. And so, so it's really not an ad hoc committee and we just felt strongly about that. I leave it to you two to say anything further on this, but that we would just sort of represented us on this, this particular group.
Yeah, so we went into the meeting and our first order of business was to discuss the charge of whatever the subcommittee would be. And it became quickly apparent that there was two phases to it. One was to create the messaging and the content of what we wanna deliver and then what are the distribution channels for how we're gonna deliver it. And as we brainstormed and started talking about it, it just, it didn't seem to make sense that the school committee would drive this. It seemed like it was kind of a, a working group collaborative effort with the district, but the school committee is a key part of that. And so, yeah, it seemed to make more sense that, you know, this would be something that the superintendent would kind of lead, but that we were all a part of and working together on.
And I think it was, from my lens, I speak only for myself, I, myself, I thought it was a very rich meeting. I thought we came away with a lot of really good ideas and things that we were, like I was able to literally start to implement today, you know, to put into play. So I think we're in a really good place with that and then we'll, we'll do our next meeting next week, as we said, what we had said yesterday. So that's kind of where we're at, that's kind of where we've landed.
So we created that committee, so now we have to dissolve it and let it be that, so by the advantages that there is more, it can be more agile, flexible, and not have to conform to open media laws?
Yeah, it's also just not us driving the process.
Okay, no, that's an important point.
It truly doesn't really make sense.
Okay.
It's more of a working group.
Right, good point.
Task force.
Task force, I like it. Okay, so.
Yeah, so I talked to Elise about it and she said that officially we would just dissolve the committee. We'll have one more quick meeting to approve the minutes. That will still go up and everything. And then moving forward, we just report out.
Okay, you wanna make a motion to the?
Alright, can I make my own motion?
Please.
I move to dissolve the ad hoc MSBA communications subcommittee.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, it is dissolved. Alrighty.
But you're not going anywhere. I need you both.
Stay there. Oh, no, 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 this is an absolve you responsibility. Okay, so now we have the employee insurance update.
Yeah, Pat said that she, you'll recall that she was here once before and said, you know, she would come back. And I don't even know that she's got much of anything to report out tonight other than to say, "Here's where we're at and this is kind of..."
Basically, our health insurance rate's at 4.9% this year, which is okay, I think. I mean, considering this year we didn't make any changes to the plan. And that would be for our health insurance, for that dental insurance, we had two, no increase from last year because we had a two-year contract at the rate that we had. So that's, that's it. And that's all reflected in the budget.
Okay. So we don't have to make any, do any actions, just to report. Okay. So, so now we have the budget update. And are those new executive summaries?
Yes, they are.
Does anyone besides me need one?
I think everybody needs one. I think Mike took one, but I think-
Okay. Can we get those passed around?
So I think, I don't know, we'll certainly spend as long or as short a time as you, you want with this, this evening. And if you send us away with questions, that's fine. You'll need to vote on your budget at the next school committee meeting, so I just wanna make sure that you, that you're reminded of that. Again, if you can just go to the, the budget hearing deck there, we'll, I can certainly go through any of the things that you were talking about in a little bit greater detail if you'd like. And I think Pat, if you just wanna go through and just highlight a couple of key things, let me start with, you know, the, the last page of course is, is the grand number at the very, very back. That's, you know, basically the number that you're seeing up there. Pat, just go through really super quickly here and then I'll go through and we'll see if there's anything further that you need tonight.
As I had discussed, we had a slide, I said, one of the biggest-
The next slide?
Yeah. Some of the drivers that we had was the Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment. You can see that that went up almost a hundred, over $100,000. That's in the first section, insurance and benefits. Out of district tuition, that's another line that, that's about page three. You see that there's a significant increase there and that is due to some move-ins, kind of a hybrid of kids going out and whatever. And in addition to that, let's see, the Unit A and C contract matrix, you'll see like that there are changes in each of the schools. Some of them, it looks like that there's a big increase, like especially in the middle schools because what you're, what you're seeing there is the, the engineering.
The Minuteman position in there in the middle schools, that position formerly known as Minuteman.
Right, that has moved in there and also some other additions based on enrollment. So now you, do you wanna talk more about this?
So I, I think, you know, one of the, one of the things we put out there tonight, and this is just, I don't know what you're thinking is on this or not, but the OPEB funding and the turf field, you know, we've still got $50,000 sitting in both of those lines and I'm not sure if you want to, want us to keep that $50,000 in both of those lines because it, of course, comes together to be $100,000 if you want it or not.
Can we see that in the?
Yeah, what pages are they on? The OPEB and the?
Right, they're on the first page.
First page, right? About halfway down, yeah.
I see OPEB, yep, yep.
So you see the $50,000 there.
And I'd like to speak about that too. Last year, we voted to use revolving fund money.
Yes.
To fund OPEB.
Yep.
Part of the process for funding stabilization or to fund OPEB is that that has to be part of our budget process, you know? So that has to be part of the document that is presented to the towns.
Okay.
So where that money is coming from revolving funds and going into stabilization, we will still be making a $100,000 contribution to the OPEB fund this year.
Share in this budget.
Even though we-
For FY '20. For '21.
For '21.
Even though it was voted on before.
Right, because we had to wait to do that transfer.
Oh, okay.
Until it was part of a budget process.
Okay.
So that $100,000 goes in in '21.
Okay. So the, in essence, your books show that there is gonna be $100,000 going into OPEB this year without this. Just, but this is an earlier vote that you took. As she said in your spot, it's part of the process that we have to take.
Yes, Mike?
So just, I'm a little confused there. Does that mean that?
It is confusing.
The overall contribution is gonna be 150?
Based on what we have right now.
If we leave that $50,000 in there, the $50,000 that we've put in the actual budget.
Right.
The $100,000 you decided on previously.
Right.
But it will go into, into that fiscal year.
Leah?
If, this is just a point of clarification, I guess. If we were to approve a budget that put 50 grand in OPEB and 50 grand in this track and field stabilization fund and then we had some unforeseen situation that pulled funding, could we move this money to say, cover a kindergarten teacher if we needed to?
Once it's in stabilization, I don't think you can.
What about, oh, and the OPEB is also stabilization fund?
Yes, yeah.
Well, it's not a stabilization, but it's a very specific fund.
Yeah.
But the money will be there for good. Like we wouldn't be able to move it over.
Well, yes.
If an emergency arises.
You can't, you can't spend money on a teacher for that.
Once it's designated for those two things and those, those specific funds, that's where it stays until it is removed to use for those purposes.
What would be the impact? Cause I know that we're in a place where we never imagined we'd be. I mean, we call it the beginning of the year. We were anticipating that, that the towns would accept an increase of 4%. So this is very, very different and we're making, when I see nine staff positions, you know, it's concerning, of course.
Sure.
What, if we were to save approximately $100,000 from the budget, that's, that's a position, it might be a position and a half. If we do not put money into the stabilization fund for the track or the additional $50,000 for OPEB, is there a detrimental impact that, that has to us for FY '21?
I would say no because we could still, we still have $100,000. We're making the contribution in fiscal year '21 to the OPEB fund. And I think it's really important for our bond rating that we continue to make a contribution.
Sure.
As it is in fiscal year '21, we're going to be making $150,000 based on this budget right now as it sits.
Yes.
If we were to take the $50,000 and use it towards salaries.
Yep.
Then we would still be making a $100,000 contribution.
Okay. Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. With regard to stabilization for the track, it's just this year we're not contributing to that.
Right, and when it comes time to replace that wear layer, which we put off to next year.
Right.
It's going to be increased.
Okay. Elaine?
Oh, sorry, I was gonna say, and we have about $100,000 right now sitting in the track.
Fifty and, yes, $100,000.
I think there's $100,000 in there right now.
Okay. Elaine?
I know that how the OPEB trust affects your bond rating is a little squishy, but do you have any details on like?
I mean, how?
Yeah, like what makes a difference if, you know, if your rating goes up by this much?
Nothing concrete.
Okay.
I, I suppose if you weren't making any contribution at all, that would have a detrimental effect because it is a liability. And that it, if you weren't making any contribution at all, it's like you're ignoring it.
Right, I just think our bond rating is gonna be really important coming up.
Oh, absolutely. Don't think that we haven't had that same discussion, yeah. Absolutely. And there are a number of things that affect that. It's our E and D.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
So you have to be really, we're really walking a tight line here.
See?
Okay. Having, having been a booster of OPEB contributions for the last three years, I think that the $100,000 that's already been allocated for OPEB contribution for this year, first of all, let's face it, it's a drop in the bucket for what we, for what our overall liability is, somewhere in the $45 million.
Forty-two, don't exaggerate.
Well, give or take.
Okay.
Okay? Forty, forty-two million liability. But if we can give Brooke that counselor that she is looking for very, very closely.
We can't tell her what to do with the money. We can make the money available.
Yeah.
You know so much, I'd like that counselor for the middle school.
Well, she said earlier this year.
Yes, yes.
I, I think, I think we seriously have to look at limiting our contribution to OPEB this year to $100,000.
Okay, thank you.
And you know the way I normally go on this one.
I sure do. Mike, did you have a comment?
Just to kind of go back to this, 100 versus 150, does that mean that in our budget, if we vote on a budget that does not include a $50,000 contribution, the item I would read zero?
Yes. Leah?
I just worry that doing an OPEB, one item of zero, then puts us in a position next year where we're gonna have to come up with 50 or $100,000.
So, oh, if I may.
Oh, sorry.
I recognize me. So what I was thinking about, because FY '20, we have been putting $100,000 into a stabilization account for full daycare. FY '22, we won't have to do that. So there's $100,000 there that we could do something with. Just a thought.
And, and incidentally, last year, that's exactly what we talked about, is once this process ended, we would then shift that money back into OPEB. Because the concern last year was that we're not contributing enough to OPEB.
Right, right. We could make up that, we could put the, well, I hate to plan ahead, but I-
We will never make enough money.
No, no, not about OPEB. I've given up on that. But just to say that if we are pulling 50 from stabilization for track and 50 from OPEB, then we, the potential is there to make it up next year with the $100,000 that we were putting into full daycare stabilization, just a thought. So we don't have it now, but we might have it then. Elaine?
So that all makes sense. I'm also a little concerned about E and D and how much of an increase we are putting back into the budget. And if, if that should be a priority as well because, like, like you said earlier, what happens when something comes up? Like are we, is our E and D actual reserves low enough that it could really screw us up?
Well, I think it's probably gonna be dependent on how we do this year and how much money we use in 2022 from E and D.
Yeah, but we're having a hard time even reducing that hamster reel by like $50,000 a year.
Right, we have a million dollars going in this year.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Leah?
So therefore, if we were to take out the fifty thousand for the track, we would have a hundred thousand dollars there. And we need to pay for the relayering.
Next, next year.
How much does that cost?
I wish I was, yeah.
I don't remember either.
More than a hundred?
Off the top of my head, I can get, I can get that number, but it's over a hundred thousand.
So how are we going to pay for that?
It will be fully in the budget.
For the following year?
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-two.
Oh, next year.
So if it's a hundred and forty-eight?
We'll offset by what's in, in the stabilization.
Right, so we have a hundred thousand in the stabilization fund. We will go into the year that we have to pay for it with a hundred thousand plus maybe fifty, if we can recoup that. But will it cost more than a hundred and fifty? Will it cost a hundred and eighty? And if it does, where's that thirty coming?
I, I don't think we know that right now, I think that's looking too far ahead. And I think the prices of the, we're not exactly sure what it's going to be.
I don't want, I don't want to put a, a number out there that could be wrong. So.
I think that that's sage, yeah.
Yeah. But that, that's what the reality of it, of it is. If we, we'll have fifty thousand dollars less to put towards that next year.
Yeah, I mean, that, that feels very close. And I think, not to prioritize athletics over retirement benefits, but I just don't want to be caught short on the track that we are going to have to write a check for in the next three hundred and eighty days.
We've had, we've had this discussion as well. I, I do want to just step back for a minute here, too. I think one of the things I enjoy about this, as strange as this is going to sound about this discussion, is that you can see how far ahead we are thinking and we are planning, whether it's OPEB, whether it's track. And again, kudos to previous school committee members for looking ahead and helping and supporting us as we've, that we can even have this level of discussion. We're talking twenty-two and we're sitting in twenty. It's a very good feeling, I just put that out there.
Other questions? Do we want to entertain a motion?
Oh, yes, Leah?
If we, if we took it out of the track field in this budget and it goes into, say, your salary line item, could it then go into, back into the track and field stabilization budget, right? So like the opposite of my earlier question? If we end up not needing that, that personnel money?
Well, then it really rolls in at the end of the year to the E and D.
To the E and D.
But, but then it's still workable money for us. So I mean, your thinking is, your thinking is right. It's just about the process of, of how it gets there. But your thinking is spot on.
So that I'm feeling more comfortable with, freeing the money up, not to necessarily spend it, but to make it freer.
And I want to say, too, we're not coming forward and asking you to do any of this tonight. So I mean, if you, if you would like to, that's fine, but we're certainly not coming to you with hat in hand saying, please, you know, we just don't want to put towards OPEB this year, anything like that. But it, it's just food for thought for you.
Well, I know it's food for thought, but, you know, we have to vote next week.
Yeah.
So if there is an inclination to do this, then we ought to consider it this evening. I, unless people have a different point of view. Steve?
I, I would, I would like us to pass a, rather than a, a vote of a motion, a resolution that we recommend the fifty thousand dollars for OPEB and the fifty thousand dollars for the field for next year be removed from the budget.
From the budget, that, that part of the budget?
And reallocated.
Okay.
In, in other words, it's our sense that we would like this to do, we're not forcing Brooke to do this.
So you probably don't.
It's a resolution, I, I.
All right, so did we vote on a resolution or?
Yes.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
So do you need a motion?
I just, I just did. I would, I would, I would like, I would, I would like to move that the, that a sense of the, of the school committee motion, a motion, a resolution be accepted to remove the fifty thousand dollars for the field stabilization fund and the fifty, and fifty thousand dollars from OPEB and recommend that it be reallocated.
Reallocated.
Reallocated based, based upon the superintendent's recommendations.
Very good, okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Questions?
Mike? Um, just personally, it's, it's, this is a bit of a struggle. I realize that this came up this week because of how we've reworked the budget to present for the workshop this week. And we have to vote on it next week, so that puts us in a really difficult position, have to make this decision tonight.
It would be helpful.
I think personally, I've, I've always been an advocate of putting money into OPEB. And, you know, it's, it's sort of this hard balance. I actually prefer to know, not to know, but to, to understand where that money is best used, although we can't say where it goes, rather than it just being fluid and floating. So this is not a question, I, I guess it's sort of a statement and a comment, and I'm, it's a tough one.
They're all tough decisions. Yes, Elaine?
Would it be possible to separate the motions, so that we talk about OPEB separately?
Well, it's, it's not, it's, it's a, it's a resolution.
I'm sorry, separate? Do we split the resolution?
Sure, why not?
So we have.
Different feeling.
All right.
Amend?
I, well, let me withdraw the first one.
Okay.
If you withdraw your second, we'll start again.
Thank you.
I would like, I would like to have a resolution of the board to remove fifty thousand dollars from the budget, allocated to the field stabilization fund, and allow the superintendent to reallocate that fifty thousand dollars where she feels best.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Leah?
Okay, so now I'm thinking, so if we were to reallocate this money perhaps to our position.
We don't do that.
Okay, but, okay. I'm just saying that.
That's why I said for her.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just thinking long-term, that money isn't going to be here every single year.
It kind of is, but it just gets.
But if we have to spend it on the track at a certain point.
It's a new allocation next year. So we will allocate that, we, we might decide to allocate a hundred thousand dollars for the track next year. What I'm looking at is the money that we will not need next year for full daycare stabilization.
Okay.
That's, those are, that's how I see it.
Yeah, the, sorry, the reason I was thinking about these two things separately is because we know that the track is going to come due next year, and so we don't have a number around it, and that makes me really nervous about taking money that we know we're going to spend in short order, potentially away, and then getting us into a difficult position next year, whereas OPEB is like, all right, if we pull back, I know we don't want to, but if we pull back, we know we can catch up, or that's not, we're not going to pay out OPEB next year.
Right.
So there, there's more wiggle room there, or more fluidity there, and so I'm, I'm kind of thinking about it differently.
Other comments?
So this motion, this resolution is about the track?
To take.
To clarify.
Okay.
Yeah.
To take the fifty thousand dollars from the, the track stabilization fund and have it reallocated within the budget.
It's not to take it from the existing fund.
No, 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 from the line item.
Yeah.
For the FY twenty-one budget.
And we will have that hundred thousand next year.
That's my.
That will be, that will be our, our slush, slush amount.
We don't use the word slush on this.
All right. That will be, that will be our available funds.
Bingo.
For, for completely paying for the track refurbishment next year.
Can we? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of reallocating the fifty thousand dollars that has been allocated for the track stabilization line item in the FY twenty-one budget? And asking the superintendent to reallocate that? All those in favor? All opposed?
Is that Kathy Mary, Steve?
We have a tie.
I abstain.
So in the face of, this is where I, it doesn't pass?
It's, it was a tie vote, so.
It doesn't pass?
Yeah, for all intents and purposes, it doesn't.
So would you make the other resolution, please?
No.
Would someone like to make a resolution relative to the OPEB line item?
Can I just clarify, was that Steve Mary and who else?
I was in favor, okay.
And you abstained.
I abstained.
Okay, Elaine?
Be it resolved that we eliminate the line item dedicated to the OPEB stabilization fund.
Yep.
And allow the superintendent to reallocate as she sees fit.
The MO?
Of fifty thousand dollars.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Kathy.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, thank you.
So does that, is it Steve?
No, it doesn't matter.
Nope, it doesn't pass, no.
Thank you. So, other questions for Brooke about the budget? Steve, um, that's Steve, yeah, Steve, Mike.
That's Scott last week.
He's still a Scott in our hearts.
I'll have you know, everybody that watches the school committee meeting called me Scott all week. I had voice messages that said, hey, Scott.
You know, people watch, I think that's great.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
We digress.
So, just clarification, I know I do this a lot, and I'm sure this is a quick answer, but system-wide line item, six, six lines down, can you specify what those rather large unspecified district-wide cuts?
Oh, what page are you on?
Uh, front, front page. Yeah, it's, uh, seven forty-nine, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand.
That's the. Those, those are the nine positions, right? Am I, am I right? That's the, those are the nine positions.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, Leah?
Just a quick clarifier, I, I don't know how it gets called out, or if I can even know the facts of this, but when you presented the budget, one of the things you were seeking to do from kind of an innovative curriculum standpoint was to introduce those, like, part-time position curriculum.
The leads, the leads.
Leads. So are those still there?
The, the leads are in there for the ELA and the math lead.
Everything else is gone.
Everything else is gone.
And EL, oh, ELA.
ELA, in English, or it's K-八大?
Yeah, I thought it was ELA, but no.
K- twelve.
Yep.
We're going to come back next year and try again.
Any other questions about the budget? Okay.
I just want to say, too, that, that, you know, although we had, from Brooke, Brooke, the outline of what would happen, I mean, this is, so we have this tonight, and that's not a lot of time, you know, for us to really look at this in some depth and compare it to, and, and also to know exactly, I think it's important to know what cuts, so that we don't, you know, I, I would just expect more description than, than this in terms of whatever you can do. I understand how staff positions and that part.
Right, and that's the biggest chunk, yeah. Because if you, if you're, Mary, if you were to take a look, for example, at teaching and learning, for example, you, you would go through like line by line by line, I mean, it, it would be mam, especially this year with the amount of reductions that we made. It, I don't know what your paper would look like, quite frankly. So, but, because each department, and I said that earlier, each department, each school, sent in all of their cuts on the, the various line items. And so, you know, that, it's extensive.
But I mean, to, to have the questions, to, to ask the questions, what's there, you know, what's not there? And I'm, I'm used to, it was a long time ago that I was on school committee, but getting information like this prior to a meeting, so we really have time to, to work with it and to digest it and to, and to think about questions, so.
Well, certainly, we can add another meeting if you'd like to, or we can certainly do that. And if, the other thing that you can do is pull in a budget and warrant committee meeting, and we can go into greater depth with you with that. Those are the meetings generally that you would come to us and say, okay, here are the questions from school committee members, can funnel questions to you folks or whatever to, to bring back. So I, I would certainly encourage that you do that, too. So you've got, the whole point is you've got time between now and the next two weeks to, to, to do that, to, to funnel the questions to us. We want you to do that.
Yeah, and I would say that, I mean, certainly another meeting is an option, budget and warrant, it would be a place to vet some of these things. We have the original budget books, we have this, and we're not just going to do a cold vote on the budget, there'll be a final discussion, and then, then we'll vote.
Yeah.
So there is time.
Because this is one of our provinces, you know, the budget is ours.
But I, I think the other thing to understand is that finding these cuts, I mean, Brooke has, and Pat have alluded to the amount of time, but right up until the last minute, and there are, you do, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is a ballpark that they will be cutting. Can they specify it right now? No, because if you say, we're going to cut these nine positions, and then someone retires or someone leaves, there are a lot of moving parts. So the hope is that some of this can be done through attrition. But in the past, when we have had to designate a chunk of money to cut to get us to our target, it has been at the superintendent's discretion. And I know it would be helpful to know what exactly the cuts would be, but that's for the superintendent to decide. We've been given, we were told three percent. It's been hard. This is where we're at. You know, if you want to go through and ask questions, that's fine. But I, I, I think that there's still things at this point of the year. If, if, if you tell somebody they don't have a job, and then all of a sudden, that position didn't need to go, so.
I, I feel very good about, and, and this is not, I don't feel good about this budget, I remember saying that last year, too. I mean, you don't, I, I, nobody feels, nobody wants to cut positions. Nobody wants to do that. Because I feel that every, every staff member that we have in this district plays a vital role in our district. But having said all of that, you know, it, we go back to the community's need of, of kind of a certain number, and, and you're right, we started at four percent, and that, that's kind of where we were initially. But again, in all fairness to our town managers, they're looking, too, and their lives change, too. And so when it came in, well, no, can we have it at three? I, I'm proud of the fact that we got it there, you know, like, because this was not easy. And this has been, this has not been easy for, and I, I know you already know all this, so I'm just telling you what you already know. But it's not easy for the administrators, it's not easy for people like Rob, who's, you know, had to cut different lines that, oh my gosh, now what? Because now we've got to try to figure this all, like, and I, again, I know that you know this all too well, but each of these units, as they try to make their units work and flourish and do the best that we can for the district, and, you know, you're asked, well, can you cut another ten thousand here, can you cut another five? It's not been easy. So for us to bring in every, I just can't even begin to imagine what that would look like right now, just because we've cut in the smallest of corners.
Even with like our techno, like our technology budget, God bless our technology director, he creates four different budget versions for us that are like, and I mean, he, he's under me, so I sit with him, he creates four, and we go through each one, and the specificity, just in the tech, district technology budget.
Alone.
Alone is pages and pages, and he creates four separate ones. And then we decide where we can go and what we can, and just, just, I'm just talking about the enormity just of that department alone is, the magnitude is enormous.
And with that, we ended up going with a hybrid.
With a hybrid of one of the versions.
So, so all that being said, there's still two weeks to compare this to what we got originally and come back with questions, so there will be an opportunity. But the, the way the budget is done now and the way it was done twenty years ago.
Well, I'm also going on, I mean, recent experience.
Oh, sure, sure, but I'm thinking about the budget twenty years ago in this district. Very different process. But, so is two weeks enough time?
I would think so, it's just, it's very difficult to get something, you know, the night of.
But we're not voting tonight.
We almost did.
No, no, we voted on lines.
There is a budget and warrant committee meeting at five o'clock in two weeks.
Leah?
I was just wondering, if we, so if I were to take this document and compare it to the binder that I have, who should I address my questions to? Should it be to our budget and warrant subcommittee, should it be to Brooke?
I don't think it, I don't know how you would like to do it.
I, I think that, I can't answer them, so I would circumvent me, CC me on it if you'd like.
Okay.
But I would think that Brooke and.
It could, yeah, either one of us, probably, Pat's probably the, the best. Yeah, either one of us, probably, Pat's probably the, the, the best person to get the, the level of specificity they might want for.
So can we agree that if you have questions before the next meeting, to send them to CC me, please?
Yeah, and I would need them in, in advance of the budget and warrant meeting.
Yes.
Because there are changes, there are over three hundred lines, almost four hundred lines in this budget, and I would say that there have been changes made to probably seventy-five percent of them, to get to this three percent.
I'm just wondering, you know, if, if you, if you've eliminated an assistant principal job, that's probably something that the public should know, although I don't, I don't know, I'm new to this, so.
But we haven't done that, and we would tell you that, that's why we put the key, the key points up here, so that everybody knows these are the key points right now.
Okay.
Other questions? Well, I, um, think it's important that we understand the process for, um, uh, passing the budget, and what the implications are, if, if we don't. So, um, I have the regional school district budget process from, uh, the DESE, and so if you just bear with me, I'll go through the different steps. We did, um, the public hearing tonight, and, uh, public copies of the budget were made available, um, to the public, uh, legally by forty-eight hours in advance, um, we had a quorum to hold the hearing, so in terms of adopting the budget, we needed two-thirds vote, so that means five of us would have to vote to approve the budget. The budget must be adopted forty-five days before the town meetings, I mean, our, our town meetings are all on the same day. Let's see. Annual regional school district budget requires approval of two-thirds, local, alright, so that when it goes to, if we pass it, and it goes to the towns, two of the three towns have to pass it in order for it to take effect. Failure to approve a budget, if two-thirds of the towns do not approve our budget, we have thirty days to reconsider amend and resubmit a budget. With the approval of the commissioner of education, regional districts could have an additional fifteen days to do this. The amended budget must be provided to the chair of each town's, uh, board of selectmen, FinCon and treasurer, and no later than seven days after the adoption. Um, prior to the expiration of the forty-five days from the date on which the amended budget was adopted by the regional school committee, each town shall hold a town meeting to consider approving the amended budget. So it's very important that two-thirds of the towns approve this, because it's not pretty if that doesn't happen. So, um, there's a whole process that you go through, um, in order to get it, um, passed. So, um, the other piece for us is if we fail to approve it, we have to work until we do it, we might have to set up another meeting. I think our deadline, although the regs say the thirty-first of March, our deadline is the fifteenth?
Fifteenth, I think, yeah.
Okay, um, the regs are ten years old, so maybe they, I don't know, so, um, we will stay until we have our budget, um, approved, and do whatever it takes to do it, um, because if, if we don't approve it, it goes nowhere. Mike?
So just to be clear, we're voting on this on the eleventh?
Yes.
And if it is not voted, uh, then we have four more days to vote, to, to vote it in?
Uh, we do.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on what you were, what you were saying.
We're holding the next meeting at your house if it does pass.
Not big enough, sorry.
So just keep that in mind, but I, I, given, um, the, the scenario that Brooke has presented, I think it's very likely that it'll pass. Well, three towns, if not, then two are the three towns, um, but, uh, we have to make sure that we have the five votes to, to make it pass, or we stay until we do. Any questions? So, moving right along, we did our subcommittee reports, um, there is a matter I have to bring to your attention, please bear with me. So, um, it seems as though, I know we've done a lot of work in, um, making sure that, especially with regard to the high school, um, there is a uniform process for approving overnight field trips, and so far this year, we've been pretty lucky, and people have conformed to our expectations, um, I've been made aware this afternoon of a trip that has been going on for a while, um, but that has not submitted their paperwork, because they were not aware of what they needed to do, not so much what they needed to do, but the timeline. So, long story short, the, um, the student council, there was an annual student council conference that they go to, uh, in Hyannis. It is scheduled for March fourth through the sixth, and, um, I don't have the official paperwork, but I can tell you what the trip is about, um, what the cost is, and ask if, um, for a special consideration, if I can have five of us meet to go over the official paperwork and approve this before the fourth, I know ten, uh, students and two adults that would be very grateful, so. I was looking at either Friday or Monday to see if we could get five of us in one place, and it's, it's one, it would be one item agenda. And I think we did this for a German field trip last year, was that it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ready for Halloween.
Yes, Joe.
Can I make a stupid suggestion?
You can make any suggestion you like, stupid or otherwise.
Two-sevenths of this committee is going to be at the FinCon meeting in Lancaster on Monday night.
That's not stupid, this is like brilliant.
So three of us could show, I'm gonna be there, you're gonna be there.
Yes.
And if three mem, other members could be there, we could hold our meeting.
Right before?
We could hold somewhere in, in, I'm sure if I spoke to, to Stan, or to Al Orlando, you'll probably find a meeting room for us.
That is a wonderful idea, if folks would be interested in doing that, it would be the, the, the second, Monday, the second, we could do it at, um, six-thirty, somewhere.
Yeah.
Is anybody available? I will be out of town. All right.
I would be available, we do need to have the agenda posted. Two days in advance.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, it's on.
By six-thirty.
Thank you.
Fine.
So, that's, we've got one, two, three, four, I need one more. Elaine's out of town.
What did you say?
Alright, I'm bringing my kids.
No, that's fine, Lancaster's a lovely place, you bring them to Providence, bring them to Lancaster, they'll enjoy it. Okay, thank you so much, six-thirty, it's gonna be, and, at the Prescott Building in Lancaster, Joe is gonna let us know, I will post the agenda, and I will leave it to you two to put the screws to those student council advisors.
Oh, of course, I, I really feel badly for them.
No, she didn't, I mean, she thought she was doing everything right, and then it happened.
This is probably one of those trips that's been going on for twenty-five years at the Hyannis Conference Center, which has just gone and gone.
You needed to bring her here.
Yes, thank you.
Do you want to talk to the town administrator, or the clerk, and find the best we can?
Yes, right in the Prescott building, that's good.
Alright, so I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow, yeah, I'll just talk to you tomorrow, I'll let Elaine to know.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, and then I'll send you the, the, um, the bones of it, and then we can, um, yeah, and I think that we can ask Mrs. Early, who happens to be a Lancaster resident, if she could join us.
Okay, can you reach out to her?
Okay, thank you so, so much, yes, Mary.
This is how we support student voice.
I know, I hate, I know, I know, we are. Student leadership, okay, I think that's all I have, yes, Leah?
I just don't want to adjourn before the parking lot, I have a parking lot I need.
Oh, I, I forgot to, to, uh, say that, about, um, items for, um, for, to be considered for next, uh, future agendas, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um...
And then we'll go back and do the consent agenda, but let's do this first.
This may be somewhat, um, you know, grounded in hysteria.
Okay.
But, um, you're gonna be too pre- prepared, so as we move into, um, a timeframe where the coronavirus is making people nervous.
Yes.
Right, so, um, we ha, I had some parents reach out and say that they're, um, obviously concerned, but, um, there was, there are a few articles on how schools are making plans even to do kind of, uh, distance learning, um, it's not, right, so like, we're wondering, or the parents were wondering, is there a contingency plan?
So, so that's a, that's a great question, actually, and, and we, we can put it in the parking lot, or I can address parts of it right now.
It's up to you.
Put it in the parking lot?
No, I think, I think, considering the concerns, I think it should be discussed, it should be, at least we should get an idea of what's going on now.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I defer to my esteemed colleagues, Joe.
So, so the, I, I, I would agree with you, too, and, and there's a piece of you that says, is this paranoia, or is it really, you know?
Just because you're paranoid, doesn't mean they aren't really out to get you, so you should remember that.
So, you know, I, to be honest with you, though, the, you know, MESC, for example, put something out today, I don't know if you saw that. And NASF put something out today, um, and it was actually on my list to prepare another memo to go out to our parents, uh, with some additional, um, resources, I, are, are we at the stage now where we're looking at, um, possible alternative, uh, i- in terms of just instruction and that kind of thing? No, we're not, we're nowhere near there at all, you know, and, and I was thinking, you know, we'd already sent a memo out to our parents, you know, we already talked about the fact that, you know, the, the tablets that we're using in the foggers, for example, are already registered with, you know, as being effective for, uh, agents against, uh, the coronavirus, so we actually are a little bit a step ahead, uh, as I watched all the MESs, like, all the superintendents chime in today, you know, uh, going through the listserv, and I thought, wow, we're kind of ahead of them, because we've already done this, however, I think that there are new things that we can put out there to our parent community right now, um, we're, you know, we are watching, I mean, we talk about this every day, quite frankly, so it, it's, it's certainly on our radar.
Okay.
You know, so I think that we're prepared to send out another memo, you know, within the next couple of days or at least.
Things of that nature that go out, it would be helpful if the school committee was CC'd on them, because I know that there's, there's a Power School engine that sends it out to families, but, um, it would be helpful if the school committee were aware.
And we're, we're aware of that.
You've been at it, you were at it after the last meeting, you and Mary and Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay. So, I don't think it's paranoia at all, to be honest with you, and, and the truth is, I mean, we're watching very carefully, and, and people have been very good to say, I've been traveling, or I've been here, or I've been there, you know, we've asked students to stay home, or staff to stay home, or, so we are taking very proactive measures, um, within the district right now, we're, we're monitoring it very closely, so great question.
Okay, um, I have an item to be considered for a future or next, not, not the next one, but future, uh, we're going to full-day K next year. Um, I, I would like the school committee to be briefed on, uh, how kindergarten programming will change, and what that's gonna look like. So you're going from a half-day to a full-day program? And again, you know, June, whenever, okay, okay, do you understand what I'm asking?
Yep, I do.
Yes, Elaine?
Um, I have a item for a future agenda as well, definitely not the next meeting, um, but given the student presentation we had today, and the, um, some of the things the high school students brought up, and the student voice PLT, I think it would be great to get a readout of green initiatives, or maybe a policy review, um, or something to that effect, to see like, what are we doing, and where can we do better?
Well, you know, I think that that's a great point, because we've got pockets of it happening everywhere, and I was thinking tonight, as I was watching, it's been, weren't they fabulous? Oh, my gosh, anyway, I was thinking tonight, you know, we really need to pull, uh, pull this into, uh, like, a single matrix, or, so that we can say, you know what, as a district, this is what we do, because we, we do so much of it across the district, but, but we haven't articulated it, we haven't put it all together in one place, so, um, I, I think that that's something that we should follow.
And it can also inform and be a part of, that visioning, looking forward at the high school, as you look forward, and you see a lot of what NSCA and buildings are doing, there's a lot of green initiatives in those processes, so.
I, I think you'll find that if you put that information out there, you're gonna get a lot of allies back, and a lot of offers for help, or networking connections, or ways to, to sort of involve the community into making improvements that don't necessarily have to come like straight from the school budget.
I just thought it was such an interesting, um, takeaway for me, as I was listening about the cups, because honestly, I was so focused on the water, not once did I ever think about the cups.
And children in handcuffs.
Isn't that interesting? And children in cups, that was fabulous.
Leah?
Uh, just piggybacking on, uh, what we were talking about with regard to DECA, I have wondered often if it is feasible, or, you know, why, why don't we have a 501(c)(3), kind of a foundation established, I know that larger districts all have them, um, I don't know much of what I'm talking about, but I know that these foundations have, well, do we? It's usually PTOs. Right, so like, um, it, so I'm only talking about Leinster, and Anne Marie can certainly back me up here, but, um, so I know that Leinster has a very well-endowed foundation, and, um, that endowment, then, is what funds all kinds of things.
So if we want information about it, could we put it on a future agenda for Pat to bring forward information that we need to understand?
Because I had a parent come to me and say, like, I would love to donate money to the schools, I just don't know how.
So that, that's, that's a great, I, I think that's a great topic for us to, to consider, and actually, in, in Ashland, we had a foundation as well, uh, when I, when I was there, and they had a, a major fundraiser every year, that the whole community came out, it was fabulous, and they raised a lot of money, and you're exactly right, these kinds of things got taken care of, yeah.
And Joe?
I, I'm sorry, I, I.
No, go ahead.
Lay it down there. Um, this may not necessarily be an item for a future agenda, it may already be scheduled for a future agenda, but I just want to say that after last week, excuse me, the twelfth meeting, and the decision of the district committee to reconfigure the, uh, number on the school committee, uh, coupled with the correspondence or email that we received from Christine Lynch, it has raised in my mind a significantly more number of questions than than the letter that we received actually. At the hearing on the twelfth, uh, it was represented that.
Excuse me, Joe, is this a discussion that you wanna have now?
No, 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 what I'm asking is, I'm trying to get a clarification, because on the, I'm just trying to say that on the twelfth, it was represented during the meeting that there would be a discussion on the addendum next week.
We obviously didn't put it on the.
Oh, no, no, alright, so when you said, when you said next week, you were actually referring to this meeting here?
I don't know what I was referring to, I was totally bummer, hot as a film.
I, I, I know that, I get, that's why I was, okay, so, I guess the question is, um, because there's a lot of questions that, and, and also in response to your email as well, has raised even more questions with me, so, was the intent of the chair to have this issue regarding the addendum on the agenda for this evening?
It was the intent of the chair to get through last week's meeting and plan for this one, and so it was probably an omission on my part, but we do need to have the discussion, and Mary is prepared to, uh, lead it and talk about the, the addendum, correct?
Okay, so it was never, no, I might have asked, asking if it was gonna be on the agenda, that's what I was, wasn't trying to engage in a discussion here, so.
It's, it will be on an agenda.
Alright, and on that note.
Yes.
Uh, just make one clarifying point from the meeting, because I, again, you, you made it very clear that it was a long day for you, and there was a lot of, uh, information being bandied about, uh, and I know we did discuss this via email, but there was a couple of times that it said, that was stated during that meeting, that this issue was going to be placed on the town warrant, it was mentioned twice as a matter of fact.
Just a point of clarification, when we get to the point of doing an amend of it, that will be on a warrant, not an addendum, doesn't go on a warrant.
No, no, what?
No, no, I, or.
No, I think, I think we're talking about, you were talking about the additional positions that are gonna be.
The additional positions are placed on a ballot, not a warrant, and that's done by the select board men.
Right.
People.
What I'm saying to you is, that for purposes of people who may be watching this, or watched it last week, it was twice stated that once the vote was taken, that we would now be alerting our town, uh, select board chairs that this is to be placed on the town wa, I think you wanna said, I think you really wanna say, should be placed on the town ballot.
Right, but that's when, I CC'd folks on the email, I, but the, the, um, that I sent to the town administrators and the chair of the select board, just to say that we had made this vote, and we were informing them, it's not for the school committee to direct a town board to do anything. They knew, they know that they have to put it on a ballot, so it was not in the communication that I sent to them, and I, I think I CC'd folks on that. So, so I, I hear what you're saying, that there was confusion, and in the email I sent you, I admitted that I, that, that that was a mistake, the word warrant. The word warrant, it should have been.
No, I'm not, I'm not looking at.
No, no, I know you're not.
To make sure that people understand, because I had a conversation with the clerk in, in Lancaster. There was some confusion about what someone had itself.
Sure.
Just for clarification purposes, it's going on the town ballot, not the town warrant.
The, but the select board has to vote to put it there.
Correct, right.
That's correct, okay. Are we good? Leah?
When do you think the addendum will happen?
I just want to point out, I am trying to get us out of here for.
I'm gathering, but before, however, but, we're good. Do we have any sense as to when the, um, the addendum will happen? Or not the addendum, but the, the alternate, the alteration of our agreement?
There's no rush.
There's no rush.
It takes a long time.
The D E S E is reviewing our agreement and our amendment. And we're waiting to get that feedback before we go through the process of amending anything. But right now, we've been advised that an addendum will suffice.
Yes, are you asking about the addendum? Because that's all.
I'm asking about the alteration of the whole agreement.
Oh, we have to wait. We wait until they send the review, then we'll all have it, and then the amendment process will begin. I'm so excited for that.
I just, I, I know you don't want to have a discussion on this. I, I, I will just be very brief, okay? So, right now, if you look at the, the, the school district website, there's a copy of the district agreement on our website. The district agreement on the website indicates that it's the two thousand and three, uh, disagreement.
It's an amendment to the, yeah.
Okay, so. I don't want to get in a discussion, but you're saying, first of all, what I understand.
It's on the agenda, we can't, it's in the agenda.
Here's my clar- here's my question then. Is the two thousand and three disagreement valid? That's what I want to.
Joe, alright, with all due respect, it's not on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda, we'll hash it out because it's a whole nother, um, topic. And we will have the, um, addendum on an upcoming agenda, but it won't be on the eleventh. I don't think there's any rush to do it, is there?
Not necessarily, but I don't even know that it really takes.
So I would rather put it on an agenda so that you have the time to ask the questions that you want to ask.
I would recommend that Mike McCarron be here.
I will take that under advisement, thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? We need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Yes, I am moved to approve the consent agenda, February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, continuing the warrants of February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, and the meeting minutes of February twelfth, twenty-twenty.
Can I have a second? All those in favor? Opposed? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, vote.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you, everyone.
Mary?